Okay, by executive order N 29-20 issued on March 18th, 2020, NMUSD board meetings will be closed to the public. The public may watch the meeting by joining the Zoom webinar ¿Habrá interpretación en español a través del mismo enlace de Zoom? So we will call the meeting to order of May 19th. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Barto. Ms. Barto.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
Is it a waiting room?
She's trying to get in.
All right, Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Snell.
She said here.
Ms. Matoye. Okay.
Here.
Thank you, and Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, prior to closed session, an item needed to be added to the closed session, and we require a vote on this item. The item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 of subdivision D of government code section 54956.91, potential case delay in proceeding with security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Enson Middle School. This requires a two-thirds vote. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Who made that?
Mrs. Black.
Mrs. Black moved.
Ms. Barto second.
Who?
Ms. Barto.
Perfect. Ms. Barto second. Um, roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Barto.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson.
Uh, yeah.
All right, Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries six, zero, with one, not here. Okay, so we will be moving into closed session. There are four items on, or three items, however you want to call it, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph 4 of subdivision D of section 54956.2, uh, point nine, two cases. 4B, public employee discipline dismissal release employment pursuant to government code section 54957 and education code 44954. And item 4C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 of subdivision D of government code section 54956.91, potential case delay in proceeding with security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Enson Intermediate School. There will be report out at the end.
President Flor.
We will leave this meeting and go in recess into closed session. Hi, Ashley.
Hi.
So we're going into closed session.
Yay!
President Flor, Mrs. Flor.
Yes.
We don't have any community input for closed session. I just wanted to.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, so we will move into, we will move into closed session. Meeting again, by executive order 2920 issued on March 18th, 2020, the Newport Mesa Unified School Board meeting will be closed to the public. The public may watch the meeting by joining the Zoom webinar In closed session, I have a report out. So in closed session, the board took action to release and non-reelect 144 temporary certificated employees pursuant to education code 4494, effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as followed. Mrs. Matoye made the motion. Mrs. Yelsey seconded. And there were, Mrs. Anderson voted no. Ms. Barto, Ms. Black, Ms. Flor, Ms. Matoye, Ms. Snell, and Ms. Yelsey voted yes. So it passed 6-1. Also in closed session, on item 4A, the board voted to initiate an administrative complaint and the action, the defendants and the other particulars shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate service process on one or more unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. The vote, Mrs. Black made the motion. Mrs. Matoye seconded, and the motion passed 7-0. So we will now move on to item number seven, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Move adoption.
Mrs. Yelsey made the motion. May I have a second?
Barto second.
Barto, thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Barto.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item number eight, adoption of the minutes of 4820-20 and 5820-20. May I have a motion?
Move adoption.
Mrs. Yelsey moved. Is there a second?
Second, Mrs. Black.
Mrs. Black seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Barto.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Before we take community input, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The board members did have some questions that were to be dismissed by 12:00 noon, and we did receive a number of questions. And so I want to make sure that everyone is aware of those, please. In the future, I know it's difficult for many of us. We all have obligations. But Dr. Navarro and staff, we like to have those on Monday so that because on Tuesday he has cabinet, we want to make sure that those questions are answered. Ms. Matoye, you had two questions on item 16A11 and 16A7. Were those answered for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Anderson, you had several questions. 16A6, 16A11, 16A13, couple on checks, 16B5, and a service agreement, and 16B, 17B, and 17F. Were those questions answered?
Um, yes, there was one more that I wanted to follow up on, but I will do that over email. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Also, it's important to note that this, again, we received several comments and emails regarding our Zoom meetings. And I do personally want to thank you for all those emails and suggestions. But I would like to remind both all of us, as well as staff, and as well as the public, that we continue to evolve in using this system. And while there is a call for us to take phone in, we are a very small staff when you talk about administratively. We do not have a city clerk. We do not have a city attorney. We do not have, I'm at our disposal, the number of individuals required to man the telephone to monitor that. We are grateful that Janice Mishney, who is our Director of Instructional Technology, is actually providing us the support for this. But this is way out of her, way out of her job description as well, as well as the classified individuals. So we have done some research on that. I know that Dr. Navarro is reaching out to both the city staff at Costa Mesa and Newport to see how they're doing it. We also know that many of the school districts around us are not doing public comment. And the main one that we are always compared to is Irvine, and they are not taking public calls. They're doing exactly what we are doing. Orange Unified did try that opportunity, and they got Zoom bombed. And so I think they've reverted back. So we will continue to try and make some adjustments. But again, our staff is really working hard on not only end-of-the-year activities, summer activities, as well as the restarting of school. So with that, Mrs. Black, would you read our electronic public inputs, community?
We're happy to. Um, this is a community input, electronic submissions. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda via electronically submitted comments. Each speaker has three minutes of comment, is that right? Three minutes of comment read time. And per Board Policy 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record. Sorry, this is a new paragraph.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Anderson, would you read the first comment, please, from Charlotte Wolf, or Chantel Wolf, I'm sorry.
Chantel Wolf, yes. Chantel says, "I'm requesting open and transparent communication as well as community input into the new fencing being proposed at Harper Campus and the City of Costa Mesa's City Park. As of today, Harper Park is still closed to its community. This beloved park is a huge part of our community. Between NMUSD and Costa Mesa, no one can address our concerns of being locked out of our green spaces. Please let us back into our park. Thank you."
Thank you. Ms. Barto, you have one from Karen Banner.
Yes, Karen Banner. "As a Costa Mesa resident, I am seeking clarification regarding the proposed fencing installation as well as the reopening of Harper Park. In speaking with the Costa Mesa Police Department, the Newport Beach Police Department, the Newport Beach Department of Planning and Development, NMUSD, and the City of Costa Mesa, the answers regarding the reopening of Harper Park are ambiguous. While numerous parks in Costa Mesa have reopened, our community park has not. The responses received from the aforementioned departments are in no terms aligned. While our community is altered as a result of the pandemic, this community park remains locked. It would behoove residents of the cities of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach to allow this restriction lifted as many other parks are not restricted."
Good, thank you. Ms. Black, you have Ms. Leece, Wendy Leece. You're on mute, Ms. Black. You're on mute.
Sorry. Madam President, Flor, and members of the board and Superintendent Navarro, I commend the city councils of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach for figuring out how to bring in live public comments in addition to emails read during their meetings. If I choose to comment on an item at the City Council, at Costa Mesa City Council or Planning Commission, I follow the Zoom directions and give my input. I've done my duty. Newport Beach uses Microsoft Teams platform, and Costa Mesa uses Zoom. It is a little awkward sometimes because it is a new way for everyone. But allowing live public comments truly goes to the heart of public engagement, allowing citizens to comment with their own voices. Emails are not the same. I encourage you to go the extra mile and allow real-time comments on non-agenda and agenda items. Other agencies are doing it. Newport Mesa should as well. Sincerely, Wendy Leece.
Thank you. My comment is from Marty O'Meara. "I believe NM School District is going to have some very large financial deficits due to the economic downturn and the costs related to the COVID virus. Therefore, I am suggesting that all principals and executives return their mileage stipend, which varies from $1,000 to $9,000 per year. In addition, all those earning $300,000 a year, including benefits, should take a 10% discount, and those earning over $400,000, including benefits, should take a 20% discount. That would put some of the money back where it should be, supporting our students." Ms. Matoye, you have from Joanne Nichols.
"Dr. Navarro, there are 68 business days from today, May 19th, until Newport Mesa Unified School District is scheduled to start on August 24th. In the May 8th meeting, you mentioned a few times that there are many unknowns, and we are still waiting to see what the state will do. This is not good enough. You mentioned staff working towards contingency plans. When will we see that? I'd like to know what the best case, worst case, and most realistic case scenarios are for the fall. I am a working mother to three grade school children and one of the many parents that are in this very challenging position. We need to hear something other than we're waiting on the state or we're working on it. The plans don't need to be perfect, but we should see something, or at least hear from people who have actually seen said plans. My question is simple. By what date will you present the ABC plans to the board and our school community? Thank you."
Thank you. Ms. Snell, you have the next one from Tamara Fairbanks, President-elect of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers.
Yes. "The Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers is eager to focus significant and essential efforts toward student and worker safety during the COVID-19 crisis. To learn and prepare as much as possible, NMFT leadership is researching various other districts developing school reopening plans. Additionally, members of NMFT's E-Board are participating in a sub-work group formed by Tony Thurman to specifically address and provide guidance for safely reopening schools in California and a subgroup to specifically address learning loss. Last week, we requested the district follow State Superintendent Thurman and the American Federation of Teachers' recommendation to create work groups or task force for assistance in planning for the upcoming school year. We have not yet heard from the district on what will hopefully become the shared planning to reopen NMUSD schools and hold the expectation that we will very soon be invited into this crucial planning. The NMFT perceives our goals for students and worker safety to be shared with the district and community. We consider it evident the need for a strong alliance between all stakeholders during these unprecedented circumstances. Additionally, per AFT recommendations for optimal outcomes regarding safety and learning, the NMFT is forming a work group containing various stakeholders and subgroups to move our ideas forward and to assist in creating a plan for safe and effective learning. We hope to establish ideas and practices that will optimize safety and learning during the COVID-19 crisis. NMFT's intention is to facilitate the creation of a clear and concise primary or district coinciding plan that is aligned with the CDC, AFT, and California's current and developing guidelines. Any community members, including students, who wish to participate may contact the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers for more details."
Thank you. Ms. Yelsey, you have Lori Smith.
Lori Smith, retired NMUSD teacher. "Thank you to the board and staff for your hard work to support our students and their families at this stressful time. My questions relate to reopening. Number one, have teachers been asked what it will take for them to feel safe going back to the classroom? Number two, will support for preventing contagion spread to be the spread be the first priority? If so, will there be adequate levels of trained custodial staff to sanitize classrooms? Number three, a recent letter to legislators from superintendents of three urban districts listed in needs additional counselors and nurses. NMUSD has been chronically understaffed with licensed counselors and RNs to date. How will you adjust now that there is even greater need for these professionals due to the virus? And number four, the state says LCFF funding will decrease 10%. This affects our media students who are already more impacted. What will you do to prioritize these students?"
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Anderson, you have Charlene Ashendorf.
Yes, Charlene Ashendorf writes, "President Flor, Board of Trustees, I have long been a critic of how the Newport Mesa Unified School District handled public comment and meeting availability for the public access. However, what has been made clear to me as I have participated online for the recent meetings is that there is an opportunity in every crisis, and the deeper the crisis, the better the opportunity can be. But some people are not capable of seeing it. Not only has Newport Mesa Unified seen the opportunity, they have seized it at a time to be, as a time to be more transparent and effective communicators. Additionally, more community members are engaging in this public education process. Congratulations. At the previous school board meeting, I was pleased to learn that the meeting had been expanded to allow up to 500 individuals. President Flor succinctly outlined guidelines for community participation right up front. And while copper summit first, the use of a free online Google form for public comment that automatically records and date stamps letters from the community is a big win. Finally, I was most impressed with the participation by the high school students. In the past, their comments seemed to be scripted. Last meeting, their input was meaningful and valuable. The format that the district established for their airtime is a real step in developing leadership. Thank you."
Thank you. And our final comment is from Stephanie Joyce, Ms. Barto.
Yes, from Stephanie Joyce. "I have been made aware that there is a committee being formed by the school board related to the reopening of schools. Please advise whether there are members of the parent and student populations on this committee and when we will have information related to this committee's findings. Can you please address the status of the field maintenance at T-Winkle Middle School and California Elementary? It does not appear that the fields are being maintained or even watered during school closures. As these fields are under a joint-use agreement with Costa Mesa National Little League, this lack of maintenance will affect the ability for baseball players to return to the fields for play once they're able to do so this summer."
Thank you for all of that community comments. Dr. Navarro, I know that you are next in your year report. I'm hoping that there were three overriding questions. One is Harper Park, which is the first we've heard about that one, the reopening of schools, T-Winkle, California Maintenance and Operations, and again, the budget. And I think that, I'm sure that we will be having more budget conversations. But could you address, or have Tim address, the Harper Park and our reopening, and what we're doing before your remarks?
I'd like to clarify the issue of Harper Park first. First of all, during the executive orders, all of our properties are closed to the public right now. Harper Park isn't, doesn't, that area doesn't belong to the City of Newport Beach or Costa Mesa. It belongs to the district. And so it was closed as part of our closure of all our school sites. So we haven't opened it based on the executive order because all of our sites are closed. The issue regarding the reopening of school, we are getting guidance as we move along. And we are, and I've asked our team to begin assembling a task force that will look at the recommendations that come not only from the state, but also from our county. There's a draft county guidelines ready now that maybe Mr. Lee Sung will share a little bit more about that information when he has his report. But yes, the question of reopening is starting to come up, and we will address it. We will have a team looking at it for various reasons. I do think it's fair to say, after having a slight discussion this morning, that the health and safety of our students and those who care for our students is going to be a primary concern. So that will, that will drive a lot. We also don't want to get too far ahead of what the state might recommend also because, as you saw, when we opened up distance learning, we would make a decision and have to roll it back after state come out with additional guidance that kind of had us go a different direction. So we do have to be in concert with the state. The last part is, our fields are being taken care of, but they're just not being taken care of at the level that we have had in the past. They are being watered, they are being cut. We did try to get a new irrigation system in at T-Winkle to help with that. But with the closure of the campuses and the city partnership along with the sports partnership, we haven't been able to get the organization together to replace the sprinklers at T-Winkle, which is very much needed. Mr. Hulk, can you add any other clarity to that issue?
Actually, Dr. Navarro, you covered it in pretty good detail. I can't think of anything that I could add to that.
Okay. And yes, I know the baseball teams want to get on the fields. I understand that. But until we get the, the okay to open up and open to the public, we're going to maintain them closed at this point. And we are watering, and we are cut, and we are mowing the lawns. And then the last thing, I did want to emphasize, repeat what Mrs. Flor said. We are looking at how to, how the other organizations, all the other municipalities are running the live comment. But, you know, we suspect in my early conversations with some city staff members, they may have additional staff to do that. But we'll completely analyze and see what's going on and how they're doing it, and come back to you in a couple weeks. So may I go to my report now, Ms. Snell?
I have two, I have two hands up. I don't know if that's, you want to hold those until later? Or do you want, or are they by mistake?
I wanted to.
Okay.
Mine is about parks. I don't know if Mrs. Snell's is about parks as well.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, you want to ask your question?
Yes, when I'm on the City of Costa Mesa's Restore Costa Mesa Committee, and one of the subsections of that is Parks and Recreation. And so the city has been getting a lot of questions about parks. And that has, the conversation has been, well, the school district sites are closed, so that's why these parks that are connected are closed, particularly for sites like Ray and Harper that are in the middle of neighborhoods that don't have other parks that are within walking distance. There's been a lot of families that have been asking for those to get reopened. So I was wondering if we had a plan in place for those, even if the school, like Harper, for instance, I believe there's a fence that divides part of the school, correct? So if we could set up something that would enable people to be able to use it even if the school facilities are closed, where are we on that?
I believe the city parks are also closed.
No, the city parks are open now for active use. So people can't sit and have picnics, but they can walk. They can, they can do a lot of activities within the parks now.
We'll have to meet with the city and discuss that because they, I wasn't at the last city district meeting. But in the previous meeting, we were asked by them to keep our properties closed. But we'll have to circle back.
Thank you, yes, that's changed. Thanks.
And Ms. Snell?
Yes, one of my questions was about the Harper Park in that.
Yes, one of my questions was about the Harper Park in that I haven't been to the Harper Park, but there is a fence between the park and the school. So if you opened the park, people wouldn't be able to get on the school grounds, even though we own the park, I understand that. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, that would be a great idea if we could work to open that. My other comment question is the reopening committee team. I would like to request, and perhaps you're already doing this, is that we have some parents and some students on that committee. I think it would be really important to get their input on reopening, and they would be a very valuable resource. Is there any plans to do that? Can we do that?
We haven't even sat and talked about the composition yet, Mrs. Snell, but we'll consider all options. There is a good plan coming on Redondo Beach Union High School District that's kind of set the model for everybody in Southern California that we're looking at.
Okay.
There's no reason why we wouldn't want to have all, all people represent.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Navarro, now you can go on to your report. Sorry.
Okay. Thank, thank you. That's okay. Well, I'm really thrilled to do this. I'm going to see if my high school principals are in the house. Mrs. Scott, are you here? Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Dr. Haley and Mr. Wagner. Oh, there you guys are. Okay. Well, I want to tell you, I'm going to give you a little background, and I'm really excited about this because we've asked our principals and activities director to do something very, very hard, and that is to analyze what the best options for us are for graduation and at the year senior activities. And I got, and I have to tell you, I haven't been in those meetings, but I've gotten a lot of reports. This has been one of the most challenging issues for principals and activity directors to deal with. There's nothing more important, I think, in a principal's school year than the opportunity to, to go through graduation with the seniors. You've had them for, in Kathy's case, she's had them for six years. Jake's case, he's had them for six years. And everybody else's case, we've had them for four. And you know, it's really fun to watch the transformation from seeing a young boy who's a little rambunctious in 10th grade turn into a real young man by junior year, senior year, and they're just such amazing people. But we do have some challenges, and as, as everybody said, our priority here is the health and safety of our students and our staff. And so they were charged with identifying what we could, what could we do, what's within our options to provide a memorable and a, I think what I would call an exceptional commencement ceremony. So I'm going to ask Dr. Haley and Mrs. Scott, Dr. Martinez, and Mr. Wagner to share with you what they're, what they've come, what they'll be bringing to us this year, this summer.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Navarro. I'm honored to kind of talk through our process a little bit and discussions. As Dr. Navarro alluded to, these have been difficult conversations as the highlight for all of us is to see students walk across the stage, and we want nothing more than that, but we also have that commitment to our communities to make sure we're maintaining safety. So with that, we've explored all options, and we monitor the CDC, what the governor is saying, what the city of Costa Mesa is saying as far as social structures, and we continue to monitor that. And we have high hopes, but we also are realistic with the times and know that we need to come up with other alternative plans. And through discussions and explorations, we've been able to kind of find a company that produces the best of the best. And what I say by that is they just received huge accolades by producing the first ever NFL virtual live draft. They are called the Van Wagner Company. It was the highest rated NFL draft that ever happened, and it's a production. And so we're excited to not be giving a pre-recorded ceremony, but we are excited to be giving a high school production that's put on by the Van Wagner Corporation. It does have live performances in it. More to come on that, but super excited about this opportunity. We are the only high school that I know of in the country at this time that gets to partner with Van Wagner. USC just went through their graduation through Van Wagner, and I'll turn it over to Kathy Scott to talk about what this means for her and her community.
Thank you, Jake, and thank you, board and Dr. Navarro. It's good to be here and kind of speak to this because as Jake said, it's been very challenging and concerning for us because you're taking a longstanding tradition that we can't fulfill, it looks like. And so first I want to say, and I speak for all of our principals, if social distancing and requirements loosen up and we can do a traditional graduation, well, that's our first choice. But as time is getting closer and we don't see that as happening possibly, then we decide we better have a really good Plan B. And so we, through some research and through Dr. Haley, we came across Van Wagner, and I think the thing for us, it's a very professionally done presentation and production, really. And, and then more than that, it gives equity to all schools because each school will be treated the same, but yet we can individualize. A lot of virtual graduations, you're dependent on what kind of resources you have within your own school, community, and sometimes you can have really sharp kids that are high-tech savvy in staff, and other years, maybe it's not so strong, so there would create some inequity if we were each left our own devices to try to pull off our own graduation ceremony. This one, the company comes in and equals the playing field for all of us, and we get a lot of individual attention, and then the graduations individualized per school with all of our own logos and performances and things like that. So yeah, and I'll let Dave Martinez and Michael Wagner speak as well.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me tonight. As you may know, early college high school is going to be wrapping up in nine days. So graduation's been on our minds for, for a while now, and we're excited about the notion of what this proposal brings. And as mentioned, this is really an equal way for families to be able to view their child and celebrate in a safe manner. We're partnering up with all the other schools in looking at a week to do this and deferring our date later, and that, that's fine for us. I was really concerned about having something that all families could participate in, given what the current situation is right now with our families. We have a lot of families and even students that are dealing with some pretty tough circumstances where celebrating this in this timely fashion in the best possible way, in the safest way that they can enjoy it as a family in their household speaks volumes. And it's going to be a unique presentation and celebration of what the students have accomplished, keeping in mind of all the things that really have been taken away from them, and, and they had no control over it, from a prom to senior breakfast to lunches that some schools do, to a lot of other activities that lead up and build up to this graduation. So the notion I like about it is that it is a presentation, it's a broadcast, it's going to be really done in a celebratory way. And any of you that have gone to an early college high school graduation ceremony, you know that we really try to make it individualized, and that, this has the capability of doing this, and that's something that I feel really comfortable about, and I'll be honest, today I'm looking at my, my notes and my script and trying to figure out how I can make this thing work to make it really a, just an awesome experience for our families, because a lot of our families also in, in my, in my areas, a lot of my parents have never graduated from high school. They don't really even know what a graduation from high school looks like, and this is going to be, I think, a best attempt effort. So I'm feeling really good about the proposal that we have here before you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Wagner.
Thanks, Mr. Martinez. Thank you to the board for having me here today. I really appreciate. Thank you, Dr. Navarro and Executive Cabinet. As for Back Bay High School and Montevista High School, the graduation is our culminating event where everybody's blood, sweat, and tears is made in a special way that our students persevered through all the difficulties that they face, and this is another difficulty. And as sad as it is, I wanted to say to the board that I was skeptical at first before I was able to learn as much as I have about Van Wagner and their production company, and it's very impressive, and it's really popular right now, and I think that we're on the forefront of that. Like, I compared a lot of what the other principals said, but yes, we, we do want to make this special. We do want to honor our students, and we do want to make their families feel really good about the fact that we're doing the best that we can in this time ourselves. And so with that being said, I think this is a great option. I think it's, it's what we most likely need to move towards because time is continually ticking away on us, and as we get closer to the end, it's going to be harder to put together. So I'm excited to move forward personally. My staff and students have accepted it, and they would also rather have an in-person graduation, but they understand. And so with that being said, I think the other principals and I have also talked about maybe putting something together later in the summer where we can get together with our students and bring them back together, and what that'll look like, I'm not sure, but you know, hopefully we'll be able to break bread and, and do all those things that we didn't get to do. So with, with that being said, I, I'm very pleased with where we are, and I'm excited to move forward.
So when the principals talk about this event, this is a live broadcast, and what's nice about this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Haley and anybody else, any of the principals to provide more detail, but every student's going to be in the, in the production. Students who are student speakers will be speaking live. When the board accepts the class, they'll be accepting their class live. When the principal makes the, the address, the principal address, the principal will be making that live. So this is a live broadcast, and I think that's a unique opportunity unlike what the other schools are going to get. So this is a cutting-edge opportunity that we're in, and I'd like to see any other details maybe that Dr. Haley or Mrs. Scott or Dr. Martinez or Mr. Wagner have thought about as what they see is going to happen for kids.
Yes, so I'll lead again, and excited for the opportunities, again, just referring to the USC graduation and looking at some of the creative ways they incorporated their band into the production. We have traditions at Costa Mesa with both our choir and band that have been going since we started graduation and the first graduation. We expect to continue those and get creative with what that looks like. As Dr. Navarro alluded to, our class speakers, you know, coming up with ways to really make sure that they are highlighting their accomplishments and the accomplishments of the class, as well as, as he referred to, you have that individual time where you as a family will be around and your son or daughter will be coming across the stage. It is again, pre-recorded, it's three to five seconds, it's a live, you get to wave, it's going to be mentioning what you were interested in, your accomplishments were in high school, it's going to be talking about your fifth-year plan, what's happening after high school, whether it's onto the military, attending a two-year or four-year, going into the workforce, but just a super great moment for the family, but as well as the class of 2020, just to celebrate everybody individually, and it's that camaraderie and that makes, making sure we have that safety in mind, but also that live broadcast, that feeling of excitement that it's happening in real time.
I think just to add to Dr. Haley, that's the thing that really sold me was that the kids will get to make a live video of themselves in their cap and gown and waving and celebrating. They could be by themselves, they could be with their family, and when their name is called, like in a typical graduation, you know, you're just like calling name, 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 and they're just filing across the stage. But this time, the name will be called, and then the student will be featured with, you know, live, and when I say live, it's recorded, but it's them live doing their thing with, as Dr. Haley said, with their name and some specific things about them. So it has a very personal touch that you normally don't get to have in a regular graduation, so I think it's an added feature to what we're going to be doing. And then this production company has all kinds of equipment for bells and whistles, and they'll even have a very special closing for each of our schools that would be very memorable.
Yeah, I got to thinking, I mean, at a typical graduation ceremony, talk about physical distancing happening there, where you have your parents out in the stands and they can barely see their child and not be able to really see the emotions that are there, and I really think that's what's going to be captured in this broadcast. And as I looked through how we do it here at Early College, I kept on checking off saying, gosh, we can do this live, we can do this live, this is not going to be that much of a difference, and it's good that we have the seniors speaking live. You know, if they get choked up when they're speaking, that's great. That motion should come across. I mean, even sometimes I get caught in mouth when I'm speaking, and I think that needs to come across. It's not a pre-recorded canned product. This is going to be something that they can remember, and albeit it's going to be different, it's going to be something that's going to be really, I think, memorable from a standpoint that, you know, here, here's an effort that's being made in light of the situation that we're dealing with right now, and we're knocking down as many barriers as possible as we can to give them something that could be something that they can cherish. Now, albeit, they're not going to be really in the company of each other, but as Mr. Wagner brought up, I think that really important point is if we can come up with something later on in the year for these kids to get together, they can reflect on this and say, yeah, we remember that, and you know, have a chance for them to sign their yearbooks and really genuinely say their goodbyes before they move on to their next chapter. So I think there's a really good potential here.
They said it all. I don't know what else I can add to that.
I have a couple of questions from board members. Ms. Yelsey?
Yes, thank you. Just two clarifications. One, have the students already ordered caps and gowns, or will they be, how will that work? And two, will this be through YouTube that families will watch it? How will, what will be the platform?
Well, I can speak to the cap and gowns. Most of them have been ordered, but we'll be providing caps and gowns for anyone that has not had a chance to get one yet.
Yes, and that's for all the high schools, as well as the other thing, the mode. I think there are several different modes that Van Wagner gives for how people can watch it, from YouTube to, I can't remember the four or five that they have in their platform, but as mentioned, they're the experts in this, and we're going to allow them to give the different platforms, make sure that it's going to work for all of our families.
Yeah, and Ms. Member Yelsey, just to let you know, and I'm not sure the principals even know this, because I talked to Van Wagner yesterday, but each school will have their own executive producer and associate producer. So each school will have two people from the company working directly with them, so we'll be able to work through all of these details. And again, these are high-powered people that have, you know, worked with the NFL and the NCAA and all of these groups, and so they have all of this down. But there are multiple platforms that we can use. We have the ability to choose what we want. As the principal said, it's a live broadcast, but 24 hours after the broadcast, we have the ability to have it up on YouTube or on our school websites, wherever we want to have it in perpetuity. It is our broadcast.
So will the kids, will the parents be able to record this? Will they get a recording?
It will be up on YouTube. They can see it anytime they want. We could make a recording of it if we wanted to.
That'd be so great. That would be maybe a final gift to the kids would be a recording of it, of each, you know, for each of the families. Just my personal opinion, let's spend a little bit more money and, and give that as a, you know, as a, you know, as a, as a gift.
Well, and we have the right to do that. We, it is our production, there are productions, and we can make copies, but I think I learned something from Ms. Anderson. Once, I guess, once you put it up on YouTube, it's there forever, huh, Ms. Anderson?
Well, yes, and this generation of graduates, I don't know that, you know, we'll have DVDs in 10 years at all, so.
Well, yeah. Again, I think it should be mentioned, because this is live, they're not going to be occurring at the same time. You know, Dr. Navarro, you want, I mean, I think that that's something that, Kurt, you want to expand upon that, that they're, they're not going to be stacked.
Well, actually, they're all on different days. We're doing it the week of the 15th. So Early College and Back Bay will both be on Monday. One will be in the morning. I would imagine it's Back Bay because they've usually gone it in the morning, and then Early College in the evening. And then the other days, on Tuesday will be Costa Mesa, on Wednesday will be Estancia, on Thursday, Coronet Omar, and on Friday will be Newport Harbor. Since it is a live broadcast, the company can only have one broadcast per day, and so the schools will be able to choose their starting time that they feel works best for their community. So they'll all be on different days. I think most of what I've heard is most are thinking about 6 o'clock, but they can choose to broadcast it anytime they wish, whatever time works best for their school community.
And Ms. Snell, you had a question?
Yes, I do. It's my understanding that a link will be set to students so they can record their message, it'll be clear what their, or record themselves. But I'm wondering if we would be able to provide for those students that may have trouble doing this at home for a multitude of reasons, maybe that there is appointments that they can come into the school and do it at the school. Are we looking at that as well? Because not everybody can do this at home.
We did actually talked about that today because we will have to have students come in and pick up their cap and gown. So for those that don't have the ability to be able to do that, we can set up a time for them to be able to do that at school when they come and pick up their cap and gown. So we are in the process of planning all those things.
Wonderful. Thank you. It's an exciting idea. I mean, this will be the first, maybe the only, but maybe not, class that has this type of a... of a graduation.
I will send you a link of, the company made up 11-minute video of USC's graduation. I will send you that link. It's pretty impressive.
Great. Could we post it or is that illegal? Because I think a lot of parents, when they...
That's enough. Again...
Well, I just mean, not all that, since it wasn't on the agenda, not all parents are aware that we're talking about this tonight. So I'm assuming they will get a letter and it would be really nice for them to, they're not getting all the details that we're getting. So it'd be nice for them to know.
Again, I think that that's an important comment to be made, that it is not on the agenda. But as you can understand, time is of the essence. When you have Early College, High School graduating in two weeks. And we're talking about a major corporation who is, thanks to Dr. Haley, we're the only high school, you know, the only district in probably the United States that is actually being able to do this with this company. And so we are very grateful for Dr. Haley and his contacts with the Van Wagner company. But time is of the essence. If we're being assigned, each school is being assigned a director and a producer and an associate producer. They're going to be working with the schools, the athletic department, the teachers who are going to be calling the names, because I'm assuming the names are still going to be called, the principals, all of the traditional activities, the bands, the choirs, orchestras, all of that's going to be the same. So that's why time is of the essence. And when we heard about this, we were so very excited. We wanted to get it out to the community as quickly as possible. So that's why it wasn't posted on the agenda. It's kind of a surprise. But again, and Dr. Navarro, would you like to comment on eighth grade promotion? Because I know that there are eighth graders out there that you can talk to them about the eighth grade promotions as well.
Yes, the eighth grade principals have determined which company they'll be using. Kirk has all the details on that, but they have also been working because he simply is a team. Kirk?
Yeah, they're going to do a virtual promotion and the company they've selected is Red 88 Media. And it won't be a live broadcast. Broadcast, it'll all be pre-recorded. They will do the student speeches. They will have somebody accepting the class, all the normal things. It's just pre-recorded.
I just had a quick question. How are, since it's not on the agenda, are principals, are you guys making this announcement to your own student population? How is the word getting out about this?
Good question, Mrs. Bartel. I'll let you know that there is a communication prepared for the principal, prepared by the principals to send out as early as tonight if they want.
Thanks.
Okay, I just want to thank the board and the principals. I really want to, you know, I hope we can, you know, this is a hard thing. I know the principals had a hard time going to, making this decision, but I think they made a really good decision. The next few weeks are going to be filled up with production completely. So the decision had to be made in time to be able to meet those production deadlines. So I really appreciate all your work. I appreciate the soul searching you went through with your activities directors. And I want everybody to know that, you know, this was not an easy decision and that you made it in the best interest of students and of families. So thank you very, very much. We are very excited about this. We'll be the first district in the country to do it this way. And we're very excited that we're able to, that you brought this one-time opportunity, first-time opportunity to the students of Newport Mesa. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro, is that the end of your report?
That's the end of my report.
Great.
I think that's my longest report ever.
And so we're now with introduction of new staff. I believe that's Dr. Docum and Dr. DiAgostino.
We're turning it directly over to Phil. He's going to introduce our new staff.
Can everybody hear me? I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Great. Good evening, President Flor, Dr. Navarro, members of the board and cabinet. As you know, Gary Clemente earned the rank of sergeant earlier this year and was promoted. He is no longer the school resource officer at Corona del Mar. And while those are big shoes to fill, we are very pleased at who the Newport Beach Police Department has selected as our newest school resource officer. Anna Telemann has served as a patrol officer for the Newport Beach Police Department for the past four years. And prior to her law enforcement career, she earned a master's degree in education and was an elementary school teacher for nine years. She also possesses an administrative services credential. So I feel like we're getting an extra FTE out of the Newport Beach Police Department here. We're excited to have her as a part of our SRO program. And so I'd like Officer Telemann just to say a few words to the board.
Very nice to meet everybody. Can you all hear me?
Can.
Great. I just want to say that I'm so excited to represent the department in this very unique position. And, you know, my two greatest passions since I was a little girl was to be a teacher and to be a police officer. And so what better position could I be placed in to represent this community and also serve the community? So I just want to say thank you so much for the warm welcome and I look forward to meeting each and every one of you guys in person, hopefully very soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's, that's very exciting and you're right. Now we have another full-time FTE.
I'm very excited. Thank you so much.
We're actually not, we're also getting another FT on top of that. President Flor, from the board, that Supervisor Doug Jones has chosen to retire. He's the SRO supervisor and he's going to be replaced by Sergeant Michael Scavi. Scavi, so Michael, if I'm not getting that right, I apologize. That's how they stayed in the old country at least.
You're correct.
And Mike, did I get it right?
You did.
Bobany. So he comes from a law enforcement family where his father was lieutenant with the Hawthorne Police Department and his mother was secretary to the chief of police in Hawthorne as well. He and I actually went to schools that were once in the same league together, the Del Ray League. Michael is a graduate of Bishop Montgomery High School where he was also a coach. He has various teaching and leadership capacities since joining law enforcement. He is currently in his 20th year with the Newport Beach Police Department and has been a sergeant since 2012. He has overseen the Newport Beach's motorcycle division, special events division, and now he will be succeeding Sergeant Jones as special victims unit leader when Doug retires in August. Most importantly, he's married with three lovely children who love to play hockey, soccer, and dance. And we're also excited to work with Sergeant Scavi as well.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I want to thank the board for allowing us to jump into your meeting tonight and I look forward to continuing on working with the board. I served in a very limited capacity with traffic issues when I was back in the traffic division, but I look forward to bringing that around and, and working in a greater collaboration with the school district and carry on the great relationships that we've built over the last years with our SROs.
Great. Thank you so much. So we're looking forward to meeting you in person.
Oh, thank you.
Sooner than later. Thank you so much.
All right.
Great. Thank you. And now we're moving on to our student board member reports. Carolyn, are you here from Corona del Mar?
Yes, hi.
Hi Carolyn, how are you?
Great. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So as for my student board report, distance learning has become a lot more interactive since we started eight weeks ago. For most classes, the new online standards have been communicated. So it's easier to have like a consistent schedule and just maintain consistency in like this very unknown time. So as for online learning, it's been a lot better. Adjusting to the new normal has been definitely difficult with a lot more flexibility in our schedules, but the key to being successful is trying to have a routine and getting in that physical activity. And it definitely helps students have planned out their weeks in advance. So every Sunday they'll write out what they need to do and stick to that plan. And that's what's made students adjust so well. And then for creative ways that teachers have used distance learning is most, well, most use Zoom and Google Classroom, but some have used Flipgrid, which is like basically a minute of like video discussions and it's, everyone can see your videos. And that's definitely been used by some teachers and it's been a great platform and you know, that's it.
Thank you. And then we have Luke Gogorishfield from Costa Mesa. Is he on? Luke, there you are. Hi Luke. Sorry.
Okay, before I start, I would like to ask for forgiveness for my amateurish report because I'm pretty new at this myself. So, good evening, President Flor, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, distinguished guests, and the student board members. My name is Luca Gogodishvili and I am a junior from Costa Mesa High School representing the school on behalf of Catherine Pham. So I've noticed a few large changes in the execution of distance start to the current point. I found that teachers are organizing their class time better and the curriculum is also more organized. And every class period has something to discuss and do. And the implementation of online grading and deadlines help more gain importance. I feel like that's a very large point. Relating to a question of the new normal, for me personally, I saw only a few changes because that's how it's almost been for the rest of my year because I'm enrolled in 4AP classes. I'm doing all the OCC Spanish class. So my routine largely always consisted of studying. Just, just like usual, wake up like an hour before classes start. I make myself breakfast, clean myself up. Then after my Zoom classes are over, I go into study a bit or I go to my Spanish class if I have it that day. Then after that, I do some exercise, some push-ups, sit-ups, and squats. And for the rest of the day, I talk to my friends using Discord, which is another platform for online communication, a little bit like Zoom. And I also play video games and play piano from time to time. One thing about the teachers I want to mention is that I appreciate all the work that they put in with helping us to prepare for AP exams and staying on track with the curriculum. I want to point out they post many resources on Google Classroom for students to help them understand class material better. And I found that to be very helpful for myself as I use many of those resources to study for the AP exams. And the most important way that the teachers are engaged with the students is of course off-hours. Because those off-hours allow the teachers to go over students' works in more detail and explain things and mistakes. And for me, it has been also great, great help in learning new skills and improving on my work. That's about it.
Great, thank you Luca. Kenya from Estancia High School.
Hi, okay. So changes I've seen with our whole distance learning is that teachers are being more lenient with us with their work. They're being more understandable with like the times and like the month they give us and yeah. How I'm doing, I'm doing pretty good. My teachers have been giving me less work, which is honestly better because I'm being less stressed. And some creative ways our teachers have been adjusting to students' learning needs. Well, like Newport, no, like CDM said, we've been using Flipgrid also. Our music department has been using this app called Smart Music, which you send in your recordings. There's also, we've also been using Desmos and they've been interacting with us by like giving us games. So like, we feel like they give us a task, like oh, bring this object and you know, just to like make it so we move around and not just sit on and watch a screen, which is nice. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And then Luke Graham from Early College.
Hi. Um, so to address the first question, I feel like at first, distance learning kind of felt like thin ice, but the ice sort of melted into like shallow water and everyone's a little bit more comfortable. Can it ever be normal? No. But as long as it's gone on over these eight weeks, I feel like the energy has become, become more like academic and the feelings toward distance learning have become a little bit more casual, more comfortable, less stress. That might have led to a little bit of apathy among students. I feel like in some classes, I've seen attendance drop a little bit. And I know a lot of my friends are having a lot of big morale issues because being trapped at home is such a weird state because I don't get dragged to school. I have to stay and wake up and try to do my work as hard as I can. Other than that, I feel like class structure hasn't really changed much. There have been more ways that teachers have been trying to, to take attendance and make sure the students are participating. But other than that, over the eight weeks, there hasn't been an evolution in how the classes are done, rather how we proceed the classes. In reference to adjusting to the new normal, I do have, I guess, a routine, which is nice. It's, you know, get up, go to class, order coffee online, go get coffee, come back, do another class, walk my nieces and nephews every night, which is so much fun. And I guess it's, it's as normal as it can be. Realistically, once again, will it ever be normal? No, it won't. This is, this is crazy times. But it's getting better. And I feel like everyone is sort of getting better with their routine and, and feeling less estranged from the situation. And then lastly, creative ways our teachers have adjusted to students' learning needs. I've seen some definite, really, really, really good developments. And I mean, sad to say, not all teachers are created equal, but from the ones I expected it, some of my better teachers, no, this is, no, this is. They have definitely moved in a direction that is much more communicative. Like they really, I feel like I'm talking more with my teachers now than ever with assignments and they stay very open, respond to emails very quickly. And I mean, that should be called for, but it has changed a lot, the sort of dynamic. And the way teachers sort of cut slack in some areas to make up for like, oh, some students can't do these assignments, some students need more time, but have also tightened up in ways of attendance and, and making sure students are still learning something has been really interesting. And I feel like some teachers have done an incredible job adapting. Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Bailey Bogard.
Hi. Oh, I think Mrs. Nell, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you Bailey. I'm sorry, I forgot you were still, you were next. I do have a question, but I'm going to wait till I hear your report.
All righty, no worries. Okay, so I am Bailey. I'm a junior at Newport Harbor and I'm the board rep for Newport Harbor High School. So in terms of changes that I've seen throughout distance learning, it's pretty similar to the other schools. I've seen a lot better student-teacher communication and this has happened through teachers answering their emails a lot faster as well as utilizing office hours. Along with this, I see teachers adapting to kids' individual needs and students' individual needs throughout the process as well as more effective lectures. And the best transition that I've, I can say that I've seen is the transition from busy work to actually effective and academic work that I've been seeing. And that's really helped me go through this process is learning really interesting information rather than just busy work. And that's a great change. For me personally, adjusting to the new normal, it obviously has been weird. However, it has gotten better every single day, I feel like. And it's improved because I'm able to communicate with my teachers in such an effective way. And then thirdly, some creative ways that our teachers have adjusted to this, this distance learning. I know Flipgrid, pre-filmed webinars, EdPuzzle, library cards, and the library databases have really helped out students that I've talked to. And specifically something that's been very interesting is that last week an Ensign teacher hosted a make a banana bread Zoom. And so she grabbed some Ensign students on that, on there and as well as some high schoolers to teach them how to make banana bread, which I thought was super cool. My sister was on there. So that was a great interactive way for teachers to become creative. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Nell, you have a comment or a question?
I do. And I have to, students, your reports were wonderful. I could sit here and listen to you for another half hour. And the questions were great. I don't know who made those questions up, Mrs. Flor, but they were wonderful. I have just a brief question. Briefly, if each of you could just say what you think we could do better.
Anybody jump in?
I can go first.
Okay, Bailey, go ahead.
Just one, just one thing is routine. I know routine has helped me throughout this process, um, as well as a lot of other students. But utilizing and make, making sure that teachers universally have a routine, um, better, a better one and more strict, that would be helpful. Not exactly strict, but just a more scheduled time. Um, and I feel like office hours has been a great way to put that into effect, so.
Anybody else? You got any? I'm looking and seeing.
Mrs. Flor, Mrs. Flor, I think.
We have one other brand new gal who is from, uh, Back Bay Montevista High School. This is her very first meeting, but I would like to welcome, uh, Madeline McNair from Back Bay Montevista as our new student board rep from her, from that school. So, Madeline.
Hello, hi.
How are you?
Good. Um, so what is the biggest like changes that people these really struggle during
Up, it's frozen. I think we're having a, a download problem. I think we're, uh, Madeline, we're having some problems picking you up. We can't hear, we, you can't hear, it's, uh, the streaming is really slow. So can we, um, is there anyone who can help fix?
Maybe if you stop your video, stop your video, Madeline, and just talk. It might stop the, it might stop. We might hear you clearer. Stop your video and then just talk.
Okay. Does that work?
Or maybe go on, log back in on your phone. Madeline, log back, join on your phone and we'll hear you better. Can you log in on your phone?
Did that work?
Why don't you, go leave the meeting and just log, log in again on your phone. I, I, that usually helps my students if they, if they start slurring. Yeah. And then we can connect with their phone a lot better. Hi Bailey, how are you? I miss seeing you in the hall.
Miss you.
What we'll do is we'll, Madeline, we'll come back to you as soon as, um, we get the hi sign. We'll come back to you because we don't want to miss your report. Um, again, I want to thank, um, all of the, all of the student board members for their candid comments. Um, and thank, uh, Dr. Kurt Baurmeister, um, came up with those questions. Um, I do have a question for next time. Um, you all are, you've all been wondering, talking, but the next time is, um, some of you are juniors. What would you hope would continue out of this learning experience? What, what kind of activities or what kinds, what do you hope would continue um, next year in the new normal or in the regular classroom? I would really, um, I would like to have you, um, have some conversations about that. And again, I want to applaud the teachers. How fabulous to hear, um, the, the wonderful creative ways. And the fact that teachers are really reaching out and getting to know their students in a way that wasn't possible before. I think that is just fabulous. Um, you still hanging in there, Madeline? You're still working on it? Okay, we'll keep going. Um, we'll go to, uh, Julie Link and, uh, Harbor Council.
Good evening, President Flor, Board Members, Dr. Navarro, Cabinet, and guests. Um, I'm sure you realize the reflections theme for 2021 is I matter because. And I'm hoping that students take advantage of it this summer to start their wonderful masterpieces. I feel this is very apropos. The theme is very apropos this year as children do need to realize through distance learning and, and social distancing that they do matter. So I'm, I'm really excited and, and look forward to, um, seeing some wonderful reflections, um, masterpieces. Um, June 1st will be Harbor Council's last virtual association meeting for the year. And you know what? I wanted to take this moment just to, to tell you, it's been such a sincere pleasure and honor to serve as Harbor Council's president for the last two years. And I've had the oppo, and the opportunity to come and present updates to such a fabulous, passionate school board that you are. So I want to thank you. And, uh, the thing I want to say in closing is, um, very interesting times. Um, June 9th through the 11th, California State PTA will be holding its very first ever virtual statewide PTA meeting. So it's three evenings from seven to nine o'clock at night. And, uh, it's, they're going to discuss five, um, proposed resolutions. So they're going to take feedback from so many people. This is going to be very interesting to, to sit in on this. Um, but they're gonna, the five proposed resolutions are the e-cigarettes and vaping flavored tobacco products and youth health. The next one is net zero emissions for schools. Uh, the third one is mental health services for our children and youth. The fourth one is promote evidence-based policies and practices to improve equitable outcomes for marginal, marginalized children and youth. And the last resolution is chronic disease and injury prevention funding. If you would like me to, um, give you, uh, more detailed descriptions of what these resolutions include, I would be happy um, to email that to you. Just let me know. With that, that's all that I have to report. Thank you so much.
Thank you Julie. Yes, I think that would be wonderful if we could have those. That'd be terrific.
I'll email it to Sherry and she can distribute it as, uh, uh, is that okay?
Yes, perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
And then Madeline, I saw you pop in for a minute and then pop back out again. Are you back with us?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Now disconnect, disconnect your computer.
Connect, unconnect your computer.
Yes, unconnect your computer. There you go. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so, one of the biggest changes is I feel as if everything was so new at one point that we didn't really know what we were doing and some of the students didn't really have the resources they needed as in internet or Chromebooks. And now we have gotten into the groove of everything and it feels as if everyone has a new schedule that they're following by and it makes our distant learning a lot easier. Also, another big change would be everyone now knowing how to use their school loop a lot easier and contacting their teachers. Um, like I've said before, scheduling is like a, a big thing in this for to be able to work with everybody's going. Everybody's going to have to be in a routine and have one of the ways that I've been coping with the whole new normal is having a routine. What time to get up in the morning and have my Zoom meetings and what time I should do my project and get that all done. I think the teachers are being a lot easier on the students because they know what we are going through in the new normal and everything. Also, I think that we're setting schedules and they're always reachable to the students at any time, whether that be through email. Some even have went as far as giving phone numbers and also being able to contact them through the school loops emails. So I think teachers are being very helpful during the time of the coronavirus by being very reachable.
Thank you, Madeline. Thank you so much and welcome to, uh, to being on, uh, being a school board member for the rest of the year and we'll be seeing more of you.
Okay, thank you. You too.
Thank you. Um, again, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to call on Pam Saunders, uh, President of CSEA. Chapter 18. Pam, are you there?
Here.
Great. Hi Pam.
Hi. Good evening, President Flor, Board Members, Dr. Navarro and Cabinet. Thank you for everything you have done to support our classified employees during these trying times. I would like to thank the board for recognizing us on your video message. We really appreciate the recognition. First off, this is Classified School Employees Week and normally we would be celebrating everyone and enjoying a stay with all of you as well. We will miss that opportunity this year. No celebration this week, but CSEA State is having an online Zoom celebration with CSEA Board Presenters Games and Prizes. Our Classified Employee of the Year finalist is Kathy Kido, Administrative Assistant at Anderson. She received a $500 reward from Schools First and she'll, will get a Glass Award from OCDE. And we're still waiting to hear from the state on her. We had our first Zoom chapter meeting last week to take care of business. One of our items was scholarships for the students of our classified employees. We awarded eight, we awarded eight $1,000 scholarships. We used extra money from our conference since we are having a virtual conference this year. We were, CSEA was very excited about this opportunity. Our scholarship recipients are Maggie Diffusi, her mom is Sandra, uh, she's a job transition specialist at Harper, Anthony Hall. His dad is Troy, he's a BI at Harper, Samantha Gray, her mom is Lana, in budgets, Troy Huber. Mom is Shannon, she's in athletic equipment at Estancia, Jamie Garcia. Mom is Griselda, nutrition assistant at Lincoln. Teresa Schimmets, mom Judy, administrative assistant at Victoria, Danielle Dickey, mom Pamela, IA at Costa Mesa High School. Beverly Angula, mom Anna, nutrition assistant at Wilson. Nutrition services are still on frontline, on the front line every day along with our head custodians. IT is still there every day remotely and onsite. MNO grounds are working alternate teams to keep main, maintain the grounds. HR payroll, accounting, budgets, purchasing, working remotely and onsite to get day-to-day business accomplished. Warehouse is still picking up and delivering every day. Office managers are working onsite and remotely. All classified are helping when needed and on call. The classified at home are staying home to keep the rest of us safe. Working remotely is a new experience for all of us. This is a hard time for all of classified employees with a lot of unknowns. We will get through this together. Again, thank you for your time and listening.
Great. Thank you Pam and thank, please thank everyone. We are so appreciative of all the hard work that all of our classified employees have been doing. Just, uh, yesterday, I think Dr. Navarro told us that we sold, uh, we have, uh, distributed over 150,000 meals to our students and families. That's an incredible feat. And that all is because of nutrition services and all the classified staff that have stepped up. So thank you very much. Um, next we'll have, uh, Dr. Britt Doughty, NMFT Association President. Britt, are you there?
So good.
There you are.
Trying to. Good evening, President Flor, Members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, Members of the Cabinet, Members of the Community. I'm Britt Doughty, President of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. Uh, and first, I would like to give a big shout out and thank you to CSEA and all of their members for the hard work that they do. Uh, no one in Newport Mesa would be able to educate students without, uh, all the support that you guys do on a daily basis. And, uh, we know how hard it is for, for all of you working from home and then having to figure out how to come onto district property to get your jobs done. So thank you so much for what you do. Uh, we want to join in the celebration this week for recognizing classified employees. Um, we also, um, want to, uh, give a shout out to our members that really worked hard in the past week or so uh, to help do some different preparation to get student materials out to kids in elementary schools. And with the support of the classified staff, they were able to distribute, uh, those materials to get home. I think it's going to make instruction a little bit easier in some grade levels and just give some comfort to kids to have some of their personal items again. We also know some individuals, especially at Sonora, that just went out of their way to celebrate student birthdays and making something special for kids that wanted to see their teacher in a special way. Uh, you know, a shout out to the Newport Harbor staff, uh, which is, uh, both certificating classified staff. They've done amazing work, uh, to help families in need, uh, through different, uh, outreach efforts at that school. Within our local leadership, Tamara Fairbanks and Sarah Allwater are two of our leaders who are, uh, volunteering extra time, uh, to participate on a special panel with the State Superintendent Tony Thurmond, looking into um, representing our needs in Newport Mesa as well as collectively across the state for needs of students in distance learning and how we can look at, um, the technology, uh, for reopening schools and how it's all going to fit together. On a state, uh, and national level, um, I just came off of a meeting just before this, uh, where we were, you know, having to go through the really tough news that we're hearing from Sacramento about the budget for next year. Uh, and what I want everyone to know is that CFT and AFT are very strongly advocating on the state and federal level to have as much funding as we can to make sure that we have safe schools, uh, that we have the right, uh, staffing and the right, um, supplies so that we can maintain cleanliness and, and an appropriate way to reopen our schools. Uh, because collectively, we all want to make sure we've got a safe place for people to work and for students to learn. Uh, and everybody's comfortable having their kids show up to school. And we recognize that that is a, uh, cornerstone for helping to reactivate our economy is how we do that reopening, uh, in the fall. Um, there was a great framework, uh, created by AFT. It's on their website, aft.org. Um, I'll send it to the board, uh, again this evening to make sure you have it. It's a pretty easy read. It's some things to think about, uh, as we frame our next steps here in Newport Mesa. And as, um, Tamara spoke a little earlier, uh, we are ready, uh, to, to roll up our sleeves and do that hard work and work with the entire community to figure out how we do these next steps to get ready for the fall. Uh, you know, we're wanting to allocate our time and energy towards doing this in a positive way, um, uh, to make sure we've got a good place for kids. I, I really appreciate the student comments that were given tonight. They are very helpful for us to, for us to reflect on things that are going well and give us some points for, for reflection for the future. Uh, and then the last thing is, um, I wanted to let the board know, uh, last time I came to you, I told you we were in the process of having our election. Uh, Tamara Fairbanks was elected to be the next president. She will take, um, uh, the office July 1. Um, and then that's caused a little bit of a, uh, an opening on our board. So we're doing some extra elections to kind of finish filling out our executive board and we'll probably have all that wrapped up and, uh, by the, the end of the month. So, um, thank you again, uh, for your service, um, and for what Newport Mesa is able to do. We are, uh, all, uh, very grateful to be working in Newport Mesa. Uh, these are challenging times and, uh, we recognize that everybody's just really working hard collectively, whether you're in management, if you're a certificate or classified, uh, and it's a collective effort to serve our students.
Thank you Britt. And again, please thank your, uh, the E-Board as well as all of the teachers for the outstanding work that they're, they're doing in their classrooms and reaching out and, and capturing those students that ordinarily have, have fallen through the cracks. Um, there's, there are still some kids that have fallen through, but a lot of them, we've caught them. Um, and they're, and they're being engaged. And so we really appreciate all of that hard work. I do have a comment, uh, or a question from Ashley Anderson.
Oh, that was from earlier. Thank you.
Great.
I, I was just wondering about the public comment, getting questions answered, but it's, I'll ask at the end.
Okay, great. Okay, so we are now moving on to item 14. Uh, 14A is a financial report from the Citizens Oversight Committee regarding Measure F expenditures. Uh, Dr. Navarro. You're on mute.
Thank you for catching up. Uh, yeah, this is a, a routine, uh, annual report that we get and we're, uh, very lucky to have some community members who devote significant amount of time, uh, to help, uh, Mr. Holcomb and his team, uh, go through the expenditures for facilities. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Holcomb.
Sorry, thank you, Dr. Navarro. Uh, yes, um, it is a fantastic committee and, uh, we really appreciate uh, they work very hard to, uh, to do the job that, uh, the Oversight Committee is set up to do. So Julio Zunzunegi is here tonight to give you their report. Julio?
Good evening, everyone. Now, there we go. And pardon me, I've attempted to start the video, but. but for some reason I don't have video, so can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. Good evening, everyone, and I am the Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee. So, President, Floor, Superintendent Navarro, Members of the Board and Leaders of the Newport Mesa School District. We're all very proud to be on this committee and happy to be serving our, obviously, our school board and local taxpayers of the school district. My presentation will encompass just a brief explanation of the scope of our responsibility, the process that we follow to fulfill our responsibility, our findings for this fiscal year 2020. And then I'll let everyone know where we, our information and our findings can be found on the district's website. As far as our scope, the committee was established by the school board in 2005 for the primary purpose of ensuring that our taxpayers, ensuring our taxpayers that the expenditures of Measure F bonds are consistent with the state purposes in Measure F. In other words, to confirm that the school board is using the bond funds in the way that we promised our taxpayers we would. And our committee members are appointed by the NMUSD school board and by also a broad range of constituency groups in the community. And our committee will serve until the last dollar of Measure F bond funds are spent. As far as the process, we perform our charter, our duty by meeting four times a year with the senior management of the district. And as necessary, we also meet with the architects and builders and independent auditors, which we refer to as service providers to the district for various projects. During these meetings, they present a detailed update of the planning, scheduling, budgeting and expenditures on all current Measure F funded projects. And our committee probes these, not only the Board members and school leaders, but also the service providers with questions and thoughts. And sometimes these meetings can go on for hours, but they all graciously and patiently await our question, sorry, answer our questions and provide additional data until all of us members of our committee are satisfied that everyone is doing their job on behalf of the taxpayers. Annually, during one of the fall meetings, we also interview independent audit firm who audits the financials of the Measure F building fund, which contains the fund proceeds, of course. And they also complete a performance audit that ensures expenditures are complying with the relevant sections of the California Constitution as well as provisions of Measure F. Given all those responsibilities and that diligence, our, our findings, I'm pleased to report on behalf of the committee that for the most recent two fiscal years, ending June 30th, 19 and 18, the independent auditor has given the district's Measure F building fund financial statements an unqualified opinion, meaning that it's a clean bill of health for both the financial and performance audits. Now, specific to fiscal year 2020, our committee has reviewed the expenditure, expenditures related to the Estancia High School Theater Project thus far, which will comprise most of the funding from Measure F over the next couple of years. And given the recent NMUSD Board approval, the project budget has been placed at 32 million, of which 26 million are monies from the Measure F fund, and then the additional 6 million are monies allocated from the NMUSD budget. The committee understands that NMUSD will fund the district-wide ongoing major maintenance at 4% of the district's general fund in accordance with Board Resolution 340300. And also that this funding will be, of course, used for the maintenance and cleanliness in order to ensure the facilities, including the Estancia Theater Project, is maintained or are maintained at high standards of condition over time. We've had a chance to review these expenditures as far as the, the design and development of the Estancia High School Theater Project goes. And specific to a report, SAB 184A, where it demonstrates that 725,605 or so, $45 have been spent thus far for the design process. And our findings are that all of those expenses are within scope and are primarily for the design of the process thus far. In conclusion of our findings, of course, the, the project over at Estancia for the theater has been on pause for the last three months given the COVID-19 pandemic challenges we've all faced. And that project will resume June 1 for the, June 1 of this year for the process of new construction documents being drawn. We anticipate that that process will take about five months. Overall, we feel that the Estancia High School Theater Project will be an outstanding example of design and construction for the Estancia school site and the community. And our commu, our committee will continue to monitor that budget and expenses of the project until its completion. After considerable review of the process thus far, all of the Q and A with district executives and managers, our committee members are certainly satisfied with the expenditures and believe that they are keeping in the requirements of Measure F and is approved by the taxpayers. Mr. Holcomb, we found you, and Mr. Trader, we found yourself as, and the rest of the district leaders to be extremely approachable, responsive, and notwithstanding our probing efforts, definitely patient with our review process. Our committee commends each of you and all of you that have supported our, our detailed research. Commends you for the job you're doing to manage these Measure F projects. Lastly, just to notify everyone that all of our agenda and meetings are, of our committee meetings are available to the public view on our district's website. And that's the conclusion of my update. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Martha, you're on mute.
Apologize for that. Let me check and see if there's any questions. I don't believe so. Julio, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Thank your committee. It's nice to hear from you.
Likewise, Martha, it's nice to connect with you again. It's been a while.
Yep.
Good evening. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, moving, I, moving on to item 14B, report on the 912 math instructional materials. This is very exciting. Dr. Navarro?
Well, you know, I don't know who could have made this work on, in a distance learning or in a distance communication format, except for the team that Mr. Drake has assembled. I gotta be honest. When he told me he was going to be doing this over Zoom and getting consensus, I, I wondered how he would do it. And you know what? I'm not surprised. You know, he always gets his team together, and they work together, and they figure it out. So, thank you, John, and I welcome you and your team.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. I'm going to share a document hopefully here. I believe, can, can everybody see that? So, President, Floor, Board members, Dr. Navarro, Cabinet and guests. The pleasure to be back in front of you again with some results from our high school adoption process. And as Dr. Navarro alluded to, this is, this is an absolute team effort. I've brought with me tonight some of the team members to represent, you know, the many others who are part of this. So, Dr. Jake Haley is with us this evening, and will present some of this report and the history of our process. Jake's been integral in moving, you know, this entire process along, really starting with our middle school process about four years ago. We also have Gabe Del Real, our Coordinator of Curriculum Instruction, who will, who will provide some information tonight. And then to represent teacher voices, we've got three teachers. Stevie Bowden from Costa Mesa High School, Wendy Cannon from Newport Harbor High School, and Caroline Carr from Corona del Mar High School. This is going to be a little bit different, and I've got all control, but we'll do probably the least amount of speaking. So, the other speakers will let me know when it's time to move their slides along. But about five years ago, Board members, four or five years ago, you turned us loose to start adopting instructional math materials that are, that are highly aligned, and we started in elementary. When we started that process, we made some commitments that we, that we committed to see through all of our adoption processes, and that's what's in front of you. First and foremost, we've committed to recognize that the instructional materials are a tool, and that is it. And none of them are perfect, but we will do everything within our power to make sure that what we do adopt through our analysis is highly aligned to our, our standards and shifts in standards and expectations of standards. And we'll do that in a collaborative, constructive way. With the, the, the end goal through, starting in kindergarten through 12th grade, is to create a cohesive experience for kids. Not a, not a chopped up experience where they've got an elementary experience, and it's different in middle and different in high school, but actually commit to a complete experience. And we've done that with our math program. And then after that, we realized after the first adoption process in elementary school, adopting the materials is an easy part. It's really that multi-year process following to support instructional change and needs of teachers to utilize these materials to meet the expectations of standards is where, where the real work comes in. So, really, this whole process for high school started about four years, three or four years ago in conversation. And they made some critical decisions along the way to really get us to this point where we're able to provide you this evening with a recommendation for, for some instructional materials. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Haley to walk us through some of the history of our process.
Yes, thank you, John, and hello again. Happy to talk mathematics with you, moving on from graduation. So, I think to back up a little bit, it's really important in the words of Coach Vavano, to really kind of know where we came from, where we are now, and really what that future is going to look like, which I'm going to have Stevie kind of talk to. Stevie Bowden from our, our middle and high school as it looks and, and works for the teachers. And so, just going back even a little bit more, there's kind of three critical decisions that have been made since 2014 in kind of three phases as well for the, the pre-K through 12. And really, it stems from the 2013 California Board of Education adopting mathematics framework and providing guidance to schools, publishers to implement the math standards. So, this was new at the time, and obviously publishers haven't caught up yet. And so, Newport made the wise decision to make sure they were going to get it right and really start looking at who they could connect with locally. They connect, they connect with the UCI Math Project and really kind of start working on those rigorous lesson designs for 7 through 12 curriculum. So, as, as John alluded to, materials are just going to be part of that process. It's really diving into the standards and then sharpening our pencil about what does it mean to be a highly caliber math program that we want to implement in our schools. And really, in looking at that and kind of diving into that from 2014 to 2016, emerges this really strong idea rooted in making sure students have a very strong conceptual as well as procedural understanding of mathematics, and then a commitment to problem-based learning and problem-based instruction. So, Phase 1 really kind of looked at that 2013 state guidelines, which then moves us into kind of that Phase 2, which is the elementary, as you're aware. And that 2016, 2017 school year, materials are starting to catch up. And John and his team lead a wonderful process getting the consensus. And at the end of that, in 2017, the elementary, pre-K through 12, adopt Bridges mathematics, which again meet that conceptual and procedural understanding as well as that commitment to problem-based. Within that is one of the critical decisions that I think was made in this entire process, and that was the sixth grade teacher. As John mentioned, it's a commitment of the district to have that pre-K through 12 math experience for all students. And in order to do that, you have to have connectivity. And during that 2017 springtime of Bridges, the sixth grade teachers knew the middle school and high school were going to go through their process the following year, and they made the courageous decision to continue their journey. They felt the need to make sure that they were going to connect to the middle school to ensure that they could help in that pre-K through the end of eighth grade decision and be part of that process to make sure they were marrying what they've learned together with the elementary level. And so, with that, the second phase is the 2017, 2018 process that's happening at the time, the middle and the high school were going at the same time to be adopting materials. And in this Phase 2, again, it, it's deep into definitions. It's deep into the planning. It's deep into making sure we have a very similar lens, is reading ed reports. It's really diving in to look to see what's out there. And this, at this point, in, in the middle school and high school in 2017, 18, was what I would call critical conversation number two during the second phase. And that was the high school's recognition and the high school's difficult conversation, even though they were hungry for new materials in order to kind of help some of the educational shifts that they were seeing, to know that in order to correctly and fully connect to that pre-K all the way through eighth grade experience, we needed to know as a secondary mathematics, what does that middle link look like? What is that commitment going to be in the seventh and eighth grade team? And this was a decision for the high school to say, look, we want to make sure we're backing out of that. We're going to support the middle school team as they continue to move forward, looking at materials, coming up with mathematical understandings together to make sure that we can support their adoption and then really try to link to that. And so, in that process, two materials kind of emerged that the middle school piloted, as you're aware. One of them was Agile Minds. The second was Illustitive Mathematics. And as you know, the committee put forth a recommendation to have Illustitive Mathematics be the middle school curriculum. So, now at this time, six, seven and eight in this Phase 2 are connecting with Illustitive Mathematics, which has a direct connection to Bridges and the instructional strategies that our elementary students are getting. At this time, Illustative Mathematics had just finished kind of all of their materials from middle school, and they were coming out with their beta project for the high school. And we had some conversations and had the ability to be able to connect in this phase, I call it Phase 2A in 2018 and 19, to be part of this beta project, to be looking at illustrative materials, which we've been doing as the high school committee alongside the middle school committee, and then give feedback to the authors of what we're seeing and what we're liking, as well as trying to give some other input as we are looking into those materials. So, we do the beta pilot in 18, 19. And then another critical conversation happens in March of 19. As we know, the high school is going to go into that final phase for 19, 20 of the adoption process. And that critical conversation is, hey, look, our students now at the middle school during implementation has had illustrative mathematics. Our high school students had a beta pilot of illustrative mathematics. As we go into this next year, looking at potential materials that could meet with our understanding of mathematics and the approach that we want, let's make sure we get it right and do an adoption that's going to support kids and a process that's going to support kids. So, this school year, principals had kind of had recommended to the steering committee that, hey, look, let's make sure we're adopting with illustrative mathematics as the base so we can analyze those materials. We can really take a look to see if they're going to meet our needs. And then, as you're going to hear from John later, two proposals are going to come out of that, either illustrative mathematics or another material which you'll hear about later. So, that's kind of where we came from. And I think those critical conversations of the sixth grade team, the high school team, really helped to propel where we are now today. So, so what does that mean? So, for, for us, it means now that we're going to be at this junction point, and the real work's going to be ahead, and that's the where we're going. The where we're going, we've been able to experience, and I'm at the luxury of a 712 school, watching what our middle school math team has been doing, rolling up our sleeves, making sure we're fully diving into the standards, and they've done a phenomenal job. We've done a phenomenal job throughout the district. And our, our teachers are really at the heartbeat of that and really that commitment to student learning. And so, we're fortunate. We hired Stevie Bowden first as a middle school teacher. She's getting her Masters in Statistics right now. So, I brought her up. She's teaching her AP Statistics, but she's also teaching illustrative math at the high school level. So, she's really going to be able to talk to that where we're going, what that looks like from that teacher standpoint and how that's going to support student learning. So, I will turn the microphone over to Stevie Bowden.
Thank you so much, Jake. Hi, I'm Stevie Bowden. It's my second year in the Newport Mesa Unified School District and my fourth year teaching. So, just to give a really quick background about me, I came from a different district that actually had just completed a textbook adoption just before I entered and noticed that I said textbook adoption and not curriculum adoption. So, I, I think that we're super fortunate that we're looking at this like wholesome curriculum that we're adopting. One of the things that really attracted me to illustrative right when I saw it upon being hired at Mesa was that it was this curriculum that had warmups and lessons and lessons, syntheses and, and homeworks and cooldowns and all of these materials provided to me when I had been making all of these all myself by hand. So, I was super fortunate to, to be a part of this process. I think part of the reason why I'm here, other than being a huge proponent of the curriculum itself, is the fact that I had that unique lens of teaching seventh and eighth grade math with illustrative last year, but then also teaching Math 2, illustrative math this year. And so, I'll, I'll talk about a little bit some of the things that I've noticed. I apologize if you see my gaze keep going to the right because I have my notes over to the right here of all the things that I want to mention. So, all of my excitement kind of started, so like I said, I, I had all of these materials, and I wanted to use them, and I was really excited to use all of this rich content. And right away with the seventh and eighth graders, I noticed that this curriculum is really Right away with the seventh and eighth graders, I noticed that this curriculum is really hard. And that's where that aspect of rigor that we're looking for with a new adoption comes in, right? So the curriculum is really hard, the students were struggling, the teachers were struggling. But as a team, we were able to talk through how to best adapt. How we're working with this curriculum for our students and really that came down to utilizing the standards. So with Common Core Math Shift, we have something called the Math Practice Standards. And using those math practice standards really benefited us in, in helping the seventh and eighth graders learn this material. And the curriculum does a great job at embedding those, those math. The practice standards into the curriculum by things that are called math language routines. As well as their routine instructional activities and routines that really help. Emphasize the, the purpose of each lesson. So as we were struggling, we kind of took, took all those tools and asked ourselves, how can we use those to benefit us? And that's exactly what we did. And so we started to have this shift in learning of, of kids who are all of a sudden speaking like mathematicians. Learning like mathematicians, asking really rich, deep questions, not only to the teacher, but to each other. Which was a really awesome shift to see, especially for kids who might have said before. I can't do this, I, I can't be good at math, I'm just not a math learner. And all of a sudden they're, they're speaking like mathematicians and also. And even just the kids who had always been good at math, they're all of a sudden saying, this is really challenging, but I'm excited to learn it. So I was super excited to then bring that to the high school level with math two. And math two was, it, it was kind of a, a new year of trying to train my kids. Of how to use the math practice standards to, in their favor and in their benefit. To talk like mathematicians, just like the seventh and eighth graders were doing. And I think more importantly than anything, one of the things was that, that a lot of the content in seventh and eighth grade. A lot of like the names of the, just like little nuances, like the names of the people and all the problems. Or down to like the nitty gritty of using things like isometric graphs. Eighth graders were using isometric graphs, which is crazy to think about. Like that's something that engineers use and all of a sudden our eighth graders are using it. And then it's brought up again in 10th grade geometry, which is awesome. They can come into the year, obviously my, my 10th graders this year didn't come into the year knowing that because they didn't have. The illustrative math in their eighth grade, but I'm super excited that the eighth graders I had last year are going to then. Enter math two with this knowledge of isometric graphs and be able to use it and be able to delve even deeper into those kinds of concepts. And also all of those math language routines and instructional routines that I mentioned that the seventh and eighth graders were doing. All of those routines follow them through the entire curriculum. So in sixth grade, when they learn how to use all of those routines and all of the math practice standards. They will then get to use those as tools throughout their six through 12 experience. Which I think is really going to benefit how deeply that they're learning math. And, and like a lot of our, just like the high schoolers were saying, that came in to. Present their findings with their teachers. I think it was, I think it was Bailey who was saying that a routine is super important for the kids. And I think we're learning that right now more than ever with distance learning. These routines, these instructional routines and math language routines that the kids are learning are going to follow them throughout this whole experience. I think I hit on everything that I wanted to talk about. Thanks for letting me share and I, I think the question and answer part will, will come sooner or later, but if you have more questions for me, feel free to chime in.
Thanks, Stevie. Now I'm going to ask Gabe Del Real to, to go through our process that you have an idea of, of what happened during this process. It's, there's some subtle differences from past processes. And then we'll wrap it up with, with the consensus day. Gabe?
Thank you too, John. Yes. President floor, members of the board, Superintendent Navarro. Cabinet and guests, it's a pleasure to be able to talk about. The process that we've engaged in, in Newport Mesa and to share with you the results of that process. First off, as an overview, one thing about this adoption process is it's very consistent. With other adoption processes that we've used in the past in Newport Mesa for. Other materials that we have selected for our students and instruction. So it is a familiar process and it's been very successful in incorporating the teacher's voice throughout. The parameters that were provided in this process are based on objective criteria. It's based, as you heard, as Jake gave a very thorough background on the history of our adoption for our programs in math. When you look at what we have in place in our classrooms, there's a coherence and just listening to Stevie talk about it a minute ago. And the graphs that students will be experiencing in eighth grade and then the coherence. To see those present in high school, there's a very logical connection. And it's all based on the fact that we had some parameters in place that the. High quality materials we were looking at had to be based on the actual standards for our students. And then we, one unique thing about this process is, again, as Jake mentioned, this was a full year pilot. In the past, we've had pilots where we would use programs for six weeks at a time. Two programs, we'd winnow them down. Working with a steering committee of teachers, we'd winnow it down to two programs. And then teachers would try them in a classroom for six weeks at a time. We understand that the stakes in high school mathematics are high. And it was decided that in order to provide the best experience possible for students and to fully understand the. Breath of the materials we were, we were looking at, we needed to spend a full year piloting. So we did. That was a little bit unique, but it did prove to be worthwhile as teachers had an opportunity to really get familiar with. With the structure and organization of the materials, but also to see how students responded throughout. John, go ahead and advance. There we go. So some core principles of our adoption process. We wanted to build the teacher's capacity through the high quality materials. And this is something that we're actually going to get to hear from a teacher in, in a couple of minutes. Newport Harbor teacher, which I'll introduce Wendy in a moment. But the high quality materials that we were looking at was not just an opportunity to dig into the materials and experience what, how they're designed. But also to build up teacher capacity and work towards that cycle of continuous improvement in our instruction. And as teachers go through and evaluate the materials. They actually spend a tremendous amount of time digging back into the standards and making some connections between the standards and the materials themselves. And then we had number two on the slide is we were only able to even look at. What were aligned materials? And we had some objective criteria, which I will share in a moment on the next slide about. How Ed Reports uses that evaluation process. To, to objectively evaluate the materials that are available and whether they are aligned with the Common Core standards. The areas of focus coherence and rigor are areas that are shifts within the Common Core standards. And those needed to be present, it was mandatory that those were present in the materials that we were looking at. And then teachers, number three, teachers go through an evaluation process of the materials. So they collect evidence throughout a six-week period of the one-year pilot. So even though they were piloting the materials for a full year, they spent six weeks collecting evidence. And it's, it, it's on top of everything that they were already doing in the day-to-day experience of being a teacher. And it's a very demanding six weeks, but they're collecting evidence. Throughout, there's an evidence guide that they use and each week there's a focus. And then they look through and find examples of where. The different shifts within the standards are either present or not present in the materials. And then they're able to actually review all the evidence collected by all of the teachers later in the process. And then number four, it's a responsive process throughout. We are listening to principals, we're listening to teachers. Most importantly, listening to teachers and getting feedback from teachers. We have a steering committee. That consisted of teachers and also gathered feedback through other means from teachers. Throughout the pilot process to make sure that we are listening and adapting based on their needs and what is working for them. But the consensus process itself is consistent with what we've used in the past. As Dr. Navarro mentioned, we did have to adapt, obviously given the current circumstances. But amazingly, both John's tremendous direction and with George Knights as a facilitator, we were able to. Conduct a consensus process via this distance connection. And John will talk about that more in a moment. Next slide, John. So I mentioned the objective criteria that we use. Ed Reports is an independent review of materials. And Ed Reports has proven to be an invaluable resource for all us in Newport Mesa and districts throughout the country. Because they have a process where, as you can see in the bullet points. A, a team of educators get together, actually remotely, they're educators from a broad array of experience. Who go through an extensive 25-hour training process. And then they receive the materials and review the materials according to their rubrics and their evidence guides. And when materials are actually reviewed by Ed Reports. They have to make it through three different gateways, which you see in the visual on the screen. The first gateway is focus and coherence. So making sure that the, the, the materials are aligned to the standards and that they're coherent, that they connect to previous learning. You heard Stevie mention the isometric graphs. And that would be an example of coherence across multiple years. There's also a search for coherence within the, the year of instruction from unit to unit. And then gateway two is rigor. Are all aspects of rigor addressed? And rigor doesn't just mean, is it difficult? But it means do students solve problems procedurally? Do they solve problems conceptually? Are they able to apply what they have learned to novel situations? And then the mathematical practices are actually standards that govern what we teach and how students should respond to math. From kindergarten through high school and they're incredibly designed because they're applicable to students. In a kindergarten classroom and as well as in an AP statistics or calculus class. If the materials make it through those first two gateways, then they go on and they're reviewed for usability. Which is basically what it sounds like. It's how are the materials easy for teachers to access and use? Are they structured in a way that helps the teachers facilitate learning and building of knowledge in the classroom? Okay, next slide. So for this slide, I, I put it on the screen just as visuals, examples of the evidence guides that were available. Or that were used when teachers collected evidence. And there was really a phenomenal experience that I had walking through the lobby of the Sanborn Building one day. As Wendy Cannon from Newport Harbor High School came in. And we had a really great impromptu conversation where she just shared with me. The experience of collecting evidence and yes, it's demanding and yes, it's time consuming and it's on top of. Being a full-time teacher and all of the other responsibilities outside of work, but. The experience of digging into the standards to really understand them and look for evidence of those standards in the program. Was something that just, you know, her passion was very clear in the conversation. And I thought there was really, you know, John and I agreed, no, no one better to represent that part of the. Of the experience better than Wendy. So I'm going to let Wendy share her perspective. On the math standards and the relationship to illustrative mathematics.
Thank you, thank you, Gabe. Yes, I am thankful for having to have to collect evidence. Because it made me finally understand the standards. And I could cry because they're so beautiful and I didn't realize how beautiful they are. So. I hope everybody's with us still. I know this is, I logged in accidentally at four o'clock. My email said to do. So here I am, it's, it's eight o'clock. So I know you all have been here for four hours, but. I love math. I, I'll just quickly share, I, I wrote some slides to, to keep me on track and I don't want to bore you all, but. I, I graduated high school in 1988 and back then there weren't, there were no standards that kept my teachers on track and. I got to take Algebra I a couple of times, even though I didn't fail it the first time, I got to take it again. And understand what I was supposed to understand. And I'm getting choked up because these standards do that. And this, this curriculum is set up for the kids to have success. And I hope we can adopt it. So I'm just going to go to my, my PowerPoints that I put in Google Slides and just tell you that. I've been teaching for 21 years and I've been at Newport Harbor for 20. So I taught with those old standards that were a mile wide and an inch deep. And when I taught according to those old standards. I would stand in front of my classes and think, oh my gosh, these kids have no idea why we're doing what we're doing. I was always a chapter behind the time the school year ended because I wanted to explain the ins and outs of math. I didn't want my students using a note card on the final. I wanted them to walk away from my class knowing the language of algebra. And when the Common Core Math Standards surfaced in California and California implemented them six years ago. There wasn't a single publisher out there that had the textbooks aligned. There were no publishers out there that had taken the time to read the beauty behind the standards. And to be honest, you know, like I was just saying, I hadn't even wrapped my head around the standards either. So thanks to this piloting of illustrative, I now honestly know these standards. The Common Core standards are written so that the kids can make sense of math year after year. They're written so that math can finally be coherent in kindergarten all the way through high school math. Illustrative allows our students to talk about where everything in math comes from. It's already been adopted for our sixth, seventh and eighth grades. So it just makes sense to adopt this curriculum for high school math. It maintains the beautiful story that the standards were designed to tell. Our incoming freshmen should experience no shock when entering their high school math class. They'll find, they'll, they'll be familiar with illustrative stories and just pick up where they left off in eighth grade. And almost every lesson in illustrative, we get to see where high school math is used in our world. We don't go cold turkey memorizing any crazy formulas and steps. We start each unit seeing where the math we're about to learn is used in our world. Illustrative has just the right number of lessons within each unit that allows us to focus deeply. On the variety of methods that can be used for getting to the end result, also known as the answer. But those answers have meaning to the students. We're not just solving equations, we're explaining our solutions. What they represent, our answers aren't just answers and the students get to think for themselves why something is what it is. I don't have to force any particular method down their throat. And the coolest thing about the teacher guide is that when you look at the answers, most of the time it just says sample response. Illustrative allows the kids to think, discuss, investigate their solutions and their answers. It invites creativity. We explain what our answers represent every single time. We get to see how everything comes to be within the world of high school math. And illustrative allows all the beauty in the Common Core standards to shine. The problem-based activities in illustrative lead the kids to the discoveries that I always wished they could see. When I stood at the front of the room thinking, oh my gosh, these kids have no idea why we're doing what we're doing. Illustrative keeps me away from standing at the front of the room talking at my students. Illustrative lets, lets my students talk math to each other while I walk around listening, encouraging them to think. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wendy. Well, I think we can all see why Wendy is such an incredible representative of. How this process connects teachers to the standards and thank Wendy for your passion. The, the teacher evaluation of materials, as I mentioned, is something that happens at the end of the six-week period. After teachers have collected evidence, they have an opportunity. After teachers have collected evidence, they have an opportunity to review all of the evidence that was collected by all of the teachers. And then they are able to submit one final evaluation of the materials. And the evaluation of the teacher, of the materials is something that the teachers have access to, these results, when they actually engage in the consensus day. So this is just one more piece of information that teachers have at their fingertips as they make their decision and reach consensus collectively, which is what I'll turn over the next part of this to John.
Yeah, thank you, Gabe and Wendy, Jake and Stevie. I get to wrap up with the actual consensus process. And as you know, our process is built on actually being in a room together and having deep conversation to make a decision. And it's based off of these three principles. One, that everybody clearly understands the proposal that we're discussing and the agreements that we're discussing. And that everybody's voice is in the room. And there's agreement by the end of consensus that everybody's voice was heard and everybody had an opportunity to be heard. And then finally, consensus comes not by vote, but through discussion and collaboration with each other, where everyone agrees to support the decision that is born from the will of the group. That the will kind of rises to the top. And even those who might be opposed to it recognize that it's the will of the collective group to move forward with whatever that decision's going to be. So the proposals for our consideration for this consensus was, as you've heard, illustrative mathematics or to move forward and continue to pilot another set of materials next year. So the discussion in this consensus, different than in the past, where we weren't comparing two materials, was does illustrative mathematics meet our instructional and students' needs in order to complete that K-12 experience we want kids to have? Those really were the proposals on the table for consensus. As you know, we go through a series of conversations and this was all done virtually. And I need to give huge kudos to George Knights, who was really the brainchild behind how to take something that really is supposed to happen in person with eye contact and body language being read and all of those things and put this in a virtual world so that conversations could be had to make this decision. And as you know, we go through a series of protocols of discussion. And one of the first ones is here in front of you. It's called the snowball result and it's completely anonymous. And it's really just to get a first quick read on the room after they've had a limited conversation around some of the data that we put in the room. And this quick result was, we had right pretty quickly about 70% of the teachers in a place where they were ready to move forward and recommend illustrative mathematics. But we still had about 30% of our teachers, eight of our teachers, still considering the need to have more conversation and possibly consider piloting next year. That led us into actual virtual consensus cups. And you've all seen this before. This has been around from our first pilot process and this is done in small group conversation. Another huge kudos goes out to all 10 of our secondary principals who facilitated small group conversations around illustrative mathematics and the option to, or the option to pilot next year. These were all done virtually in small chat groups led by these principals, with the end being that teachers weighed in virtually by moving their name onto one of these cups to demonstrate where they were in relation to recommending illustrative mathematics. The results of that conversation really moved us, right? So some people were moved from 70% of people, about eight people, still questioning whether or not it was going to be illustrative mathematics to three. So the blue, green, and yellow cups represented people who could see us moving forward with illustrative mathematics. And the orange and red cups, those three people were still, they still had some reservations. So we knew that we needed to put that voice, those voices in the room for us to reach consensus. And that was done through what we call walking the line. And we asked teachers to place themselves, and this is done virtually by them dragging their name, and I've removed all names, to either, you know, the side of moving forward with Program B and piloting next year or illustrative math. And this was the end of the conversation because people migrate and move during this conversation. But it's completely teacher-centered and they're talking to each other. And we started this conversation out with about four teacher members still, you know, having some reservations about illustrative mathematics. And they were able to air those reservations. And then also people who were on the illustrative mathematics side were able to respond. And by the end of that, about 30-minute conversation, this is where we ended. And that one teacher who's still on the right side was able to say, my voice has been heard. I've let you know what my thinking is. I see what the will is and I'm willing to support it moving forward. What I'd like to do is ask Caroline Carr now to share, you know, the teacher voice in these conversations of consensus and some next steps for us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Caroline Carr. I'm a high school teacher at Cronedale Mar and I'm also your high school math tosa. And I'm privileged and excited to be here today to talk about why we chose IM, which is illustrative mathematics, and also our next steps moving forward. So I think at this point, why we chose IM is pretty clear from hearing from both Wendy and Stevie and looking at the evidence. It's clear that IM is the right choice for us for these reasons. There's strong evidence of alignment to our standards in what we called in our rubrics Priority Area 1. And it's Priority Area 1 because these are the most important, non-negotiable things that we have to see in curriculum. And that is focused coherence, rigor, and the standards for mathematical practice. And you heard Wendy and Stevie talk about what that coherence and standards for mathematical practice especially mean for our high school students. And the Ed Reports also show us that IM is, you know, they got perfect scores when it comes to alignment to these areas and the standards. And so that's a great reason for why IM. Also, we heard from several teachers on the consensus day anecdotal evidence of success in classrooms. You know, Wendy and Stevie aren't the only people who talked about their kids, you know, emerging into young mathematicians, being able to really own their knowledge, own the math, and speak in the discipline, to execute in the discipline and to really behave as mathematicians. That's something that, I totally feel you, Wendy, I'd never seen before. And so it's really exciting to have materials that can bring that out in our students. And then finally, also, the opportunity to complete that K-12 student experience. It is really powerful to have a curriculum now, hopefully, that takes us all the way from sixth grade to 12th grade with the same characters, the same names. So students are going to grow up with these kids. They're going to get to know Jada and Diego and Han as they're growing up in their mathematics. And they'll get to kind of, you know, live with those, with those characters in the curriculum. And also the same routines, both warm-up routines, like notice and wonder and which one doesn't belong, as well as the math language routines that Stevie mentioned. All of those are consistent from sixth grade all the way up through Algebra II. And so the ability to bring these materials into high school is the completion of that experience for our students. As far as next steps, I think that some of the discussions on consensus day really revealed both what our students had, or sorry, what our teachers had gained in this process as well as what we still need to learn. And we found through discussion that we were basically totally aligned as far as teachers were in our beliefs in Priority Area 1, that IM is fully aligned in Priority Area 1. And we all agreed on that. Where there was some difference in agreement, which you saw kind of in the consensus cups results and the Walk the Line results, is that teachers disagreed a little bit in their opinion of IM's alignment in Priority Area 2. And I really do believe that that's due to the fact that we didn't spend as much time during this pilot year discussing the Priority Area 2 parameters. We spent a lot of time on focused coherence and rigor and standards for mathematical practice and not as much time on universal access and technology. And some of that is due to our pilot being cut a little bit short with, you know, distance learning starting. And what we realized is that there's still some work to be done there as far as teachers' understanding of what does universal access actually mean in mathematics? And what does technology actually mean in mathematics? Because what we know for sure is that those aspects are there. You know, they wouldn't have passed those gateways in Ed Reports if the universal access and the technology wasn't there. And some of our teachers spoke to that on our consensus day, saying like, you guys, these strategies for universal access, for example, they're there in the curriculum. Did you see them? Did you find them? And what we realized is that it's not that they're not there, it's that our teachers are still learning how to use them. Because universal access, really, it's not just a one-size-fits-all model. It's how the teacher actually uses the math language routines in their classroom that gives access to all students. And that's something that we can learn. And it's something that we can focus our professional development on in future years so that teachers can truly understand each of the eight math language routines and how they can be best utilized in their classroom to give access to all students, regardless of language abilities or special needs or any of those things. This curriculum really does have the potential to provide access for all of our students, given the right professional development for our teachers. Let me just check my notes really quick. I think I hit everything I wanted to hit. And yes, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I'll turn it back to you, John.
All right, just to wrap up, the last part of consensus is, once there's recognition that there's a will and the will was to move forward with recommending illustrative mathematics, we make sure everybody, you know, we covered the three parts of consensus and everybody was able to virtually dot in on these different graphs. So through the process, my voice and opinion has been heard and you'll see that everybody's in agreement or strong agreement there. The proposal, it is proposed that Newport Mesa High School Math will recommend the use of illustrative mathematics to meet the needs of students. There were four or five who still have some reservations, but recognize that it is the will of the group. And then a majority of the other people were strongly in agreement of moving forward with illustrative mathematics. And then finally, it's clear to me that the will of the group has emerged regarding this proposal. There are some who still see some reservations, but overall, the will of the group is to move forward is evident. And then obviously, many who clearly see what the will is. So all in all, we reached consensus virtually to recommend that, starting tomorrow, we publicly display illustrative mathematics materials for the public to review and provide some feedback on. For us to then come back to the board at a meeting in June with a recommendation, hopefully, to adopt illustrative mathematics for our high school math classrooms. And with that, we can take questions.
Thank you, John, and thank you to all three of our wonderful presenters, as well as Gabe. But I love the teachers and thank you for doing that. I do have, now I've got three questions. So I will start with Ms. Matoye, then it goes to Ms. Yelsey, and then Ms. Bartow.
I want to thank everybody for the amount of time and effort it took and your creativity, John and Gabe and George, to bring it all together virtually. Teachers, Stevie, Wendy, and Caroline, if I had you for my math teachers, I might not have become a teacher. I became a teacher because I knew I could do a better job than all my math teachers in high school. They were dry, it was terrible. And I said, I can do a better job, I'm going to make it good for kids. If I had you, I wouldn't have done that. You're amazing. Your passion has to leak into your classroom. And that's all a kid needs to know, is that the teachers care about them and they care about their subjects. So I commend you, I thank you. And boy, if you ever let us, back in the day, I wanted to pop in and watch. I promise to be quiet most of the time. Those of you that know me know it's hard, but I will be quiet if I can watch you teach. I am just in awe. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say something along the lines of Mrs. Matoye. This was, I mean, we see a lot of presentations. This is one of the best I've seen in front of all of us. And I know Wendy said she logged in at four as we did, and it's been a long night. But I could have listened to you longer as well. I thought you were terrific. You really brought such emotion into mathematics and we don't see that all the time. It was fabulous. I don't have questions. I do appreciate that you ended up coming to consensus on illustrative math because it really makes such a nice continuum now that we have from elementary school all the way up through high school. It's been a long time coming, as we know. And I think it's really exciting to have that really solid foundation for the kids now. So kudos to all of you for the presentation. It was fabulous. Thank you.
And Ms. Bartow?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you so much. It was a really wonderful presentation. And it's so exciting for me to hear from people who are as passionate about math as I am. I love math, it's my favorite. But what was so great and was reinforcing was I tested out the new materials on my kids. So I've got a fifth grader who's grown up with bridges and a sixth grader with illustrative math. And I popped her into Algebra II, not expecting her to be able to do it, but just to kind of get her impressions. And it was really gratifying to hear her say, you don't know how to do the math, but I'm totally familiar with the format. It's just like what I've already done. I understand the strategies. And then to pop my fifth grader into Algebra I, same thing beyond his ability, but for him to look at it and go, oh, I know where to find things, I know what they're saying. So that was really promising and really exciting.
Okay, Ms. Snow?
Just more kudos. It was a great presentation. And I am impressed with the collaboration and the consensus. I think you need to go into politics and you did a great job. If we could all come to consensus like this, it would be fabulous. And I too appreciate the passion that you brought to the presentation. And it's obvious your love for math and your love for teaching math. And I really appreciate that this presentation made me confident that this is the right choice. And I thank you for that.
Terrific. In terms of next steps, we have it on, it's going to be instructional materials. It'll be on display for 30 days, is that correct?
We, again, so we can leave it up for 30 days. What we'd like to do is monitor the, I guess, viewings over the next three weeks before our next board meeting. Obviously, we'd love to be able to come back to you at the next board meeting if the viewership kind of starts weaning off with the recommendation so that we can get ordering and get those materials here as quickly as possible. But if it's your, you know, if we see still heavy traffic in the viewership, then we could go to 30 days, but we're not required to.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was the reason I was, I want you to know, what is the minimum? I know that we're interested in getting these materials ordered and in the hands of all of the math teachers so that they can start developing and/or, you know, because there may be some adjustments in terms of starting school, how they're doing it. So I guess the question is, is there a process by which we, as a board, can authorize? It's not on the agenda, but can we authorize a ratification at the next meeting so that you have that ability, that you don't have to wait for another board meeting? If in case there's still, you know, I just would like to know what the process, whether we have some flexibility in terms of providing authority?
So I would like to be able to, so I guess where I'm coming from is I'd like to be able to come to you at the next board meeting with the recommendation to approve. Is as long as the, I'm going to say, the public viewing traffic is less than at the beginning. What we find is, right out of the gates, we'll have quite a few people view the materials and then it just drops off and people stop. So we've got about three weeks before our next board meeting. And so that should be enough time for us to be able to gauge that. And so what I can do is give you a Friday update, what the viewership is, and a recommendation, whether we'll be coming to at the next board meeting with the recommendation or the meeting at the end of, or a possible ratification, we can plan that way.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? And then just a technical question, this is just a really, because, okay, so are we going back to Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II? Or are we staying with Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3? Are we going now to separating the peas and the carrots? Or is this still integrated? Or is this still integrated, but we're still calling it Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II?
No. So that's a, that's a great question, Ms. Flor. The illustrative math materials are only designed in the traditional sequence. And we, you know, we knew that going in and had those conversations. So if, you know, pending approval of the materials, we will be going back to a traditional sequence of Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, to to align with the materials. We we've put some, the task of updating those courses with our TOSSes, and we'll be coming to you also with those updated courses, pending approval of the materials, also at a future date.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Hot dog. Any, any further questions on that? So are we okay that you're, who's, Dana, are you raising? Yeah, Dana, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm Dana Black and a longtime math fearful student, and then found out that my my sons actually said, I solve for x every day, Mom, and, you know, they were my biggest champion. So I, you are all kindred spirits and very appreciative, and I feel like my work here is done because we're in great hands for the future. And I know, I just know that our students will be successful, and we won't be at parties anymore saying, well, my teacher told me I wasn't good in math. And, you know, I know. And they're not, by the way. We're, we're hearing from our students now that they, you know, math is cool, they're enjoying it. So but I do have a concern, and I'm sure, you know, we have a plan, because we usually do, but I know that the people that piled, piloted it, are we supporting those teachers that may be still struggling, you know? You know, because I am concerned about the inconsistency, you know, we're going to have lots of, you know, success. Do we, you know, how do we know without throwing anybody under the bus if somebody really does need help and support in making sure that we're consistent? Do we have a plan for that?
Yeah, well, one of the things, one of the things that you need to know, Ms. Black, is our high school and middle school principals have been extremely involved in in the process, not only adoption, but in the process of of kind of learning alongside the teachers about mathematics and teaching from a problem-based curriculum. So with with their support, you know, in classrooms regularly, and Jake, maybe you can talk to that a little bit, you know, I'm confident that we'll be able to identify teachers who need help, along with, you know, this can also be done with each other. You heard Stevie talk about and Jake talk about teachers collaborating.
Right.
This out together, and those structures being set up as well.
Well, thanks for that. I appreciate all your hard work.
Ashley?
Hi, thank you. I love this presentation. I also, I love the fact that we're going to have a systematic approach to math for the first time in a really, really long time. And one of my questions is, what will we do to remediate any students who may not be ready? So it sounds like in eighth grade specifically, there was, there are a lot of students that were like, I'm really great at math and this is still really hard. So for students who may be a little bit behind and may not have been using Bridges, what is the plan in place for that? Do we, are we even be, is there intervention material that is built within this? Universal access was one of the question marks. What, what is the plan to adjust those kids who may need a lot more intervention to get ready for harder but systematic math?
The the first answer to that question goes back to making sure that we've, we've got a consistent K-12 experience. You know, we start building algebraic thinking in kindergarten now. And so a lot of our effort initially goes into making sure that that first best instruction is responsive to, number one, teachers knowing the standards deeply, and also knowing the trajectories of learning that that kids will go through in order to meet the expectations of those standards and being able to meet those kids within the core instruction initially. And then obviously, and Jake's got some interesting setups at Costa Mesa that he can talk to, but but we'll leave, you know, sites up to providing structures for additional time and support for kids, you know, to to learn what they need to in order to be able to access, you know, the the grade level content.
Well, so, yeah, I would love to hear from Jake maybe about if he has, you know, a junior, and I also love that you piloted this for a full year and it wasn't a short amount of time. I think you really have teachers now who are 100% like, okay, this is where we're going. But for kids who didn't have it from kindergarten, who maybe have had eight years and they're pretty far behind, I would love to hear, like, practically at Mesa, maybe what the experience has been to get kids up.
Jake, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So trustee Anderson, you, we focus in two areas, right? One is just in the reading levels of students, making sure that we're getting them to be a grade level proficient or within one grade level as the time they're rising to high school for that seven, 12 continuum. And the second area is in that math language and that math fluency. And so we do build an intervention classes this year, starting at the eighth grade. Next year, Dr. Kwong and I are looking at the seventh grade as well, as we analyze data of the sixth graders that are rising to us. And I know the high school level this year, we also piloted illustrative mathematics as a Math I support course, which is designed to go concurrently with the Math I. So those students at our school will have the Math I support class on their odd day, then on their even day, they go to their Math I class, and then it goes back and forth. So they're seeing teachers of math instruction every day to really kind of dive deeper into the standards, to be able to answer those questions in those gaps a little bit. And we're seeing tremendous growth with those students in their fluency and the mathematical language and their mathematical practices, as well as their confidence in being able to talk to it. So, yes, we've got a continuum that we continue to build, and we're excited about. And again, at the high school level, specifically drilling into that Math I level, because we know, once they really start to feel confident, they start to really soar as they get to Stevie and Math II and other teachers. So, yes.
And then, because with Bridges, one of the things that I've heard from parents is that math fluency is one of the pieces that isn't concentrated on as much. So to make sure that we're, we're getting all of that in so then they're ready for illustrative math, I, I just want to make sure that every, you know, like, that there are plans in place to like, okay, if Bridges doesn't 100% hit all the math fluency, what are we doing to make that happen?
Gabe, do you have any comments about that?
Yeah, you know, with the math fluency, it's really fascinating when you start to look at the way it's defined in the standards. Fluency is, as we typically think of fluency as this memorization of math facts. And what happens when students memorize math facts is that they often end up where they don't have the flexibility to apply the reasoning that goes along with thinking about numbers. And what we're looking for is in fluency is that they're accurate. So of course, in math, you know, two plus four is six, and that doesn't change, but they're, and they're efficient, that they come up with strategies. It doesn't always have to be the exact same one, but that they come up with strategies that they, that makes sense to them and the particular context of the situation. And then also that they're flexible, so that, you know, if you do ask a student, what's two plus four, they can think, they can tell you, well, two plus four is six, but I know that because four is actually two and two, and you add one more two to that, and then that makes six. They don't just have a memorization. What we see with students who, where the memorization is emphasized, is you can ask them, what's three times 12? And they can tell you 36. And then you ask them, well, what's three times 13? And they say, well, I don't know, I don't, we only do through our 12s. We don't, we didn't learn that one, we didn't memorize it. So it, you know, with fluency, what we're building and developing in our program from kinder through high school is the ability for students to really address mathematical competencies and true forms of fluency, where they're accurate, efficient, and flexible, but it's not just memorization. That takes time. We all probably experienced memorization as kind of what we thought of when it came to, you know, timed tests and math facts. And it takes time for teachers to really understand what that can look like and how to develop that in the classroom. But it is something that is part of an ongoing professional development, and it's something that will be continued to be part of what we support as we implement new programs.
Thank you. Yeah, my only other question is, are we going to be, because that was a perfect explanation, are we going to be communicating that to our parents really clearly, too? Because, you know, kids will come home and they'll be like, um, I need a little help. And then their parents may try and teach them the way that they were taught and not necessarily know. So I think particularly, too, like, as we are having it beyond display, there's going to be questions as to, like, why is it like this? Is there a way maybe for some of these awesome teachers to do short videos that explain, like, even a two-minute clip, like, this is why math is how it is now?
Caroline, Caroline Carr, or Wendy, or any of the teachers want to respond to that question?
I was just looking at something that I I had screenshot when I was searching the standards. And my son is in fourth grade, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, he still has to memorize his times tables. So I was thinking, well, because they, apparently, it's a standard, and as I was reading through the standards, they need to be fluent in their math as well as memorizing simple math facts. And so I'm just, I I'm just reading a screenshot. It said, in the context of arithmetic, the word fluently, they say it's used nine times in the standards. And so in particular, to be fluent with calculations is to be accurate and reasonably fast. So it's not like we have to go, oh, my gosh, nine times seven is what, what is it, what is it? Oh, it's 63. They have to be able to come up with it at a reasonable, within a reasonable amount of time and not like take 10 seconds. And so memory has to be fast for the kids anymore, so the difference between fluency and memory just isn't speed, it's rather, it has to do with the nature of calculating versus remembering. So I'm not, so tell me the question again, because I'm not sure if I'm really answering the question. There's a difference between memorizing things and being fluent in math.
I think what Ashley, Ms. Anderson, is asking is, how do you communicate this with parents that that are looking at how they, how they learned and how the kids are coming home?
Still carry the one. You can still carry the one. We have a variety of of ways to tackle all that's in math. There is no one right answer, and that's what I was saying in my little spiel, is you welcome whatever they see. If that's what they see, then you take that. And that's correct. If they can eyeball an answer, then they can eyeball an answer, but they have to explain it. So to know their their math facts in fourth grade, like I was going back to my son, is a cool thing, because it helps them, you know, progress a little faster in the math. But they don't have to, there's no steps I have to tell them. And and I'll be all for, now that I'm this professional with this distance learning, I can YouTube the heck out of simple procedures.
I think, I think Ashley or Ms. Anderson, the, the idea of bringing parents along is is another, another task for us, for sure. Because, yeah, fluency isn't memorizing facts, right? It's it's understanding orders of operations, it's understanding that addition and subtraction are actually connected to multiplication and division, we're just doing groups of. So there's lots that we can be doing with supportive teachers, you know, to to also educate parents, for sure.
And if I can add really quickly, if you don't mind, there are parent materials that illustrative provides. And the parent materials are up to the teacher to whether or not they want to send those documents out to the parents. And it has, it's really nice because it does, like, figures of of things that will look familiar and how those parents can support their students during those units. And they have them for each unit. And I, I believe that illustrative is working on version for the high school level, this finished for the middle school level.
Great, thank you. And I know, Caroline, you used to do years ago, when you were the mat, not the TOESA, but in your class, and I think you were a TOESA at the same time, you, you showed us presentations of your communications with your parents. You sent out on a week, a regular, a regular, if not weekly, of what the standards were and what to look for and how to do it.
Yeah, absolutely. I used to create those myself. As Stevie just mentioned, I Am has created them for us. There is one per unit, the high school ones are ready. I have been sending them, I started sending them to my parents with, when distance learning happened. And I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the parents of, wow, oh, my gosh, thank you so much, like, we didn't know that this was the way you guys were teaching it now, you know, it's like comments like that. And the, the parent letters, they do a good job of explaining what the unit is all about in parent-friendly language, so it's a little bit more elevated than student-friendly language, but not quite as technical as, like, teacher materials. And they also provide a sample task that is different from the tasks in the student workbook, so it's a task that the students have never seen before, but it's something that you could discuss over, like, dinner at, like, you know, as a family. And so it's a problem that parents can use to engage with their students, to have a conversation about mathematics at home. And I also know that I Am did a blog about a year or so ago about parent education of their materials and throughout some ideas, such as hosting parent nights and things like that. Now that we're at this phase in the materials adoption, I think that, as John just mentioned, that would be a natural next step for us, to start looking at what does parent education look like.
Great, thank you. Any other further comments or?
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Great job, great job. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, John. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, teachers. Fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. Love it, love it. So we'll look forward to seeing this on the agenda on whatever the next board meeting is, three weeks from now. Okay, moving on, informal reports, item 15A, Dr. Navarro. Oh, and one thing, I stand corrected, Russell did text everybody, we've served 180,526 meals, which is pretty still, I mean, unbelievable, unbelievable. Congratulations, everybody. Dr. Navarro? Unmute yourself. You're on mute.
Thank you again for the, thank you again for the reminder. I was, you know, you get so caught up in the presentations, you forget that you've got to click the little button here. So I just want to follow up with something I shared with the board that I got from Dr. Haley. And it's from, I shared with you this on on a nightly update, it's, and I don't, I wish I could share it with the public, but I don't have permission to do so, but it's a, it's a flipgrid that that John Lindforst, the choir teacher at Costa Mesa did. And I think it was a great example. Have you heard the kids speak today? They've mentioned flipgrid, but there are so many other tools. But it was a great example of a great teacher stretching himself, take, you know, thinking outside of the the box and figure out how he could get students to do something within the curriculum, but do it in a novel and meaningful way. And I just thought the assignment he gave kids, and that was to thank a teacher or a school person, and to make a little flipgrid video and, and share some music and some thoughts about the music and why they picked that music and why they're thanking the the teacher. And I just thought that was a really, really great example of creativity, focusing on the curriculum, getting students to do something meaningful. And then for also, you know, it is appreciation, we are, last week was teacher, last month, we appreciated teachers in the, we could have teacher, but it was just the right thing to do. And I think that was a good example, a solid example of what the kids, I think, were talking about when you asked that really great question, Kirk, about, you know, what about creativity? And I think, I just want to go back and echo what, what you've all said, and that is, really proud of our teachers, and I think you can see it in the students' comments, how they have pushed themselves and managed to develop their skills as they've gotten along and gotten better at delivering instruction over the, over a digital platform. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to assistant supes, and so the first one is Leona.
Well, thank you, President Flor, board members, Superintendent Navarro, and colleagues and guests. Tonight, I want to share with you the work of a committee that we, the public doesn't hear very much about, but they work very, very hard. And that is our Joints Benefit Committee. This is, our Joints Benefit Team is a group of NMFT, CSCA management folks, and we meet monthly to monitor the utilization of our medical plans. And they also take a look and determine plan design, and so that they really work hard to analyze the information. And so they really work hard to analyze the information and have some really deep dialogue around health and welfare benefits. And through that committee, actually, when we went to Cigna, we were able to begin a wellness component. So that is a component that folks know about, but they don't realize perhaps that it came out of the JBT. And so working with Vicky Wyman, our benefits analyst, Troy Bacon, who actually works for Cigna, puts the efforts together and coordinates our wellness program. And so when you, those of you who have participated in the walking spree, it comes from, from him under Vicky's toolage. And he does a great job in trying to come up with ideas and share with the JBT how to improve the wellness and at least keep it on the forefront of people. And I think that during this time that we've been going through, while we have not been able to have walking sprees, he is continuing the newsletters. There's one that just came out that has all types of resources for our employees, for their wellness, physically, financially, with our mental health. And it's really worth taking a look at when it does come through. And in fact, there is a mindfulness and coping with COVID-19 on Tuesday, June ninth, that is being held as a webinar that people can sign up for. And that came, again, it came through the district email. And when he does do the, puts these things together, you will notice that he pulls together the resources, not just from Cigna, but also from Kaiser for our employees who have Kaiser, and also from Optum, which is our employee assistance program, which there is a wealth of information there as well. So I just want to recognize the efforts of the Joint Benefits Committee, as well as Vicky Wyman and Troy for all of their efforts to keep us all healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to mix it up because someone has a new Bob. So we're going to go to Sarah Yakum. Yakum, Yakum, where are you Sarah? You have a new Bob.
Well, it's a temporary, yeah, it's a temporary Bob, but we'll see. And just a couple of things, thank you. I wanted to, the board already knows, but also let our public know that our extended school year program for our students with special needs will be held virtually, kind of our same distance learning platform that we've been doing. And so our staff is busy getting ready for that and figuring out what that will look like. But that's going to be from June 25th through July 22nd. And parents, if you haven't heard, if your child with special needs is, is going to ESY or if they qualify, you can contact your, your case carrier on that. So there, it is a qualification for some students to be able to participate in that program. And then the, the second item, which I think is really exciting, is that Student Services hosted their first parent education Zoom meeting last week. And we are happy to have Board Member Maitoye and Board Member Black, who represent our Community Advisory Committee and support that and be, be a part of that training opportunity. There were over a hundred people. We, we set the limit at a hundred. And, you know, it's kind of nice when you, when you can fill the room. And so we're looking at increasing that number for our next training. So Dr. DiAgostino and his team with Behavior Specialists and, and his coordinators did a great job. Javier did a fabulous job translating. We had several parents who are Spanish-speaking and we're looking forward to doing our next one in June. And if you ask Dr. DiAgostino, he says, we have learned how, the only way we're going to be presenting parent education in the future, because it worked really well and it especially worked well with our Spanish-speaking parents. So I think that's definitely a kudo to that team. So they did a good job. Thank you.
Jill, do you want to add anything?
Nope, Dr. Yakum said everything there is to say.
Shar and Dana, anything you want to add?
I totally agree. It was wonderful. I would just love to see it now being posted. If we could record it and post it on our website, we'd have it nailed.
Great.
That's what I was going to suggest as well, is that it's such great information and the way it was very methodically done. There was no, you know, looking at your watch every five seconds and making sure you get through the PowerPoint. It was just really well done. And I think that's really what our, you know, our goal should be is so that people can go into, you know, like a podcast type, you know, library. And, and so I think that's hopefully where we're headed in the future because it was lots of positive feedback. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Tim Holcomb, where are you?
I'm here.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Mrs. Flor and everyone else. Yeah, a quick update to let you know, we're very pleased that the second phase of the Estancia High School pool project is completing. The punch list contractor is currently working on the punch list. So we're very pleased that project has come along as expected and delivered back to the school as you promised when we redid this project. So we're very pleased that that project's come along.
Great. Jeff Trader?
Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight. I just wanted to cover something here, you know, as we move into this period of financial constraint, you've heard Dr. Navarro presage that you're going to see some contradictions in the deployment of our district's financial resources. And, you know, for example, you may see some programs that are tightly constrained, while other programs may be expanding at the same time. And this may cause some dissonance, you know, as you approve funding for various programs and projects. And so the source of these contradictions can be traced to the foundation of how we classify revenues and expenditures. And these, there's two types of revenue expenditure. There's restricted and unrestricted. And within the general fund, you've got restricted programs that have to be identified and accounted for separately. And these restricted programs are, are those that are funded from revenue sources that are subject to kind, how you say, constraints imposed by external resource providers or by law. And however, unrestricted programs don't have any of that. They don't have any external or legal constraints. And so they can be used for any purpose that's not prohibited by law. And approximately forty percent of the general fund expenditures are restricted. And that includes federal, state and local programs. So it's a, it's a big piece of the pie when you're looking at the, the entire general fund. The district also operates funds that are outside the general fund. And those are used to account separately for restricted purposes entirely. And so in times of financial constraints, common for unrestricted programs to be constricted, while restricted programs can experience the opposite. So this is a result of two things. First, restricted programs, of course, are limited to very specific types of expenditures. And secondly, some restricted programs are limited on the amount of money that can be carried over year to year. So relevant examples include the district utilizing restricted resources for building the performing arts center at Estancia High School and, and performing major ongoing maintenance, including like replacing roofs and other facility systems and expanding specific programs, all while the economy is crashing and district revenues are following, they're following. So, you know, thus we see this contradiction that Dr. Navarro is, is advising us is going to happen. And so in summary, you know, the district's revenues and expenditures, you can be sure they're classified according to board policy and state accounting procedures. And you also need to know that, you know, you have had a policy to maintain a prudent expenditure profile and reserve. And so as such, you know, the district is really well-prepared to manage impending financial challenges.
Great, thank you. Couple of questions that I had, if there are no other. And I sent Tim an email. I saw that the Costa Mesa Planning Commission approved a new development north of the 405 for 1,057 residential units. It's a high-density apartment, mixed use. Now, it will have to go to the city residents for approval because it generates more than X number of cars and stuff like that. Do we still collect developer fees on, on those, on those types of projects? And as well as because it is north of the 405, it'll impact, it'll impact Killebrew, I believe it'll impact Killebrook. It may impact California because it's over by SoCo, I think. So I'm just, I'm just curious about what that process is in terms of they didn't, I don't believe they contacted us for comment on it.
Actually, yes, through the permit process or through the city Planning Commission process, they submitted their documents to us and have continued to communicate that they will work through all of the typical and customary planning approvals and, and fee approvals throughout the project.
But I found it fascinating that in the report, they don't even mention education. Not once did they mention education facilities. I found it fascinating.
In their initial EIR, they were addressing the question. I'm not sure what part you were looking at, but we'll go back and look and see what new reports they've published.
Okay, so just curious. Okay, any other questions or moving on? So now we'll go to Dr. Sir.
Good evening, President Flor, board members, Dr. Navarro and guests. Wanted to touch on a process we've been working on over the last month, which, which is really sitting under this umbrella of elementary education. And it was a process of designing and implementing a way of preparing and distributing student consumable instructional materials and any readily available personal belongings of our students. A lot of planning, a lot of meetings and a lot of time went into this, a lot of departments involved with this. It touched so many fingers and components of our school district to make this happen. And it was massive in concept. We're talking about 10,000 students in elementary education and having to go to 10,000 desks with 10,000 bags and putting multiple sets of student consumables and personal items into each bag and really having kind of a three-step process. The big, the big process in the beginning was creating the plan. How are we going to do this? What personnel are we going to have involved? Who can come in, who can't? How are we going to monitor safety, which was first and foremost? The second part was determining which, which personnel will be involved in the pack-up process in the classrooms. And that third part was the distribution piece, which was the pickup. They did a fantastic job. Everyone involved with this are far too many people to call out individually and making this happen. But there was some interesting and powerful feedback I wanted to share with the board and the public. And we were able to ultimately, and why are we here? What's the work we're doing? We're here to support student learning. We're here for the students. We want them to learn as much as they possibly can while they're here. But there was another offshoot of the feedback that I received, and I just wanted to share it with you. And it was about relationships and the importance of relationships in this school district. There were so many people that were just simply happy to see one another in person. And I heard that over and over and over. And that just speaks volumes about the importance that this district places and the value that we place on relationships with one another. So yes, we're here for student learning. Yes, this was all about getting materials to our students so that our teachers can do a better job with supporting the learning by having students have the materials that they have available. But also it just really resonated with me and hearing all of that feedback that, you know, we miss it. We, we miss each other. We miss seeing one another. This is a different time than we never imagined. But it's nice to know that when people get back together, they appreciate seeing one another. And that was the thing that stood out the most. So I just want to thank everybody that was involved with this process. It took a lot of people to make this happen and I'm glad we were able to do it.
Thank you. Dr. Bummermeister?
President Flor, members of the board, Dr. Navarro Cabinet and guests. I just wanted to update you that Jeff Trader and I met last week with Jill Ayers from Newport Orthopedic Institute to update the trainers agreement for 2021, which we'll be bringing to you at the next board meeting on June 9th. And though we really don't know what our fall athletic season will look like, we do know that when our students are back on the court, back on the fields and in the pool, we will have a highly qualified, national certified trainer from Newport Orthopedic who watch over them and care for them because of the agreement that you've approved for us in the past and hopefully will approve again on June 9th.
So Kurt, will that be for all our schools now?
Yes, Costa Mesa's on board. It will be all, for all four of our comprehensive high schools this year.
Great, that's terrific. Congratulations on that. Okay, and last but not least, Russell Lee Sung. At the rear, but I figured you're going to bring it up.
I think you skipped Mr. Drake, but he may have used to.
Oh, I missed him. Where are, there you are, John, but you aren't even spoken. But yes, John, go ahead and talk first.
So if you recall, last year, we, kind of in alignment with that K-12 math experience, we revamped our sixth to seventh grade transition benchmark for mathematics with Callahan Consulting and he's all, that group is also on our consent item tonight. We are moving forward with administering that sixth grade math transition benchmark again this year. It'll happen the week of June 1st through the 5th. Sixth grade teachers have been made aware and parents were notified this evening, both in English and Spanish. And so we will move forward with that as an extra piece of information for K-6 program review, as well as another piece of information middle school staff can use to support the transition of our sixth to seventh grade students.
John, I know Mrs. Ms. Anderson had a question about, about Callahan Consulting and, and you graciously answered the question about why don't our TOESAs just take care of the, the math test? Could you explain the, the answer of why we have, why, why this is on the agenda?
Yes, and I even asked Gabe Del Real to stay because he does a lot of the, the work around that. So I'm going to actually ask Gabe to, to share with the group about, you know, the assessment in, of itself. And really the, the big part of the work is the, you know, his, his team analyzing the, the student responses.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Yeah, hello again. The, the question is an excellent question because we do have a phenomenal team of TOESAs to support instruction in our district and they do so in a variety of ways. The reason why it's really crucial to have Callahan Consulting partner with Newport Mesa for this particular assessment is, first of all, Callahan has a tremendous amount of credentials. He, I won't go into the long list, but he is actually a member of the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, Item Quality Review Expert Panel. In other words, he's one of the people who looks at and reviews questions that are part of Sback. And so there's a degree of expertise and experience that he has in what are appropriate questions that are aligned to standards that just is on a whole nother level. And then when it comes, so that's really in the design of the assessment. And one thing that was really, we thought was important is last year, as John mentioned, was the first year we administered this assessment. We made that assessment after we, all the scores were released to families and they received their reports. We made the assessment visible on our website so that there was never any question about what it is exactly we want students and teachers to emphasize in math instruction. We, in, in doing so, we knew that we were going to need a new version of the assessment this year. And that was an investment that I think was wise to make because we want, again, we want to communicate to families in as many ways as possible, the ways that math instruction is more than simply performing calculations. So what Callahan Consulting does is they, they develop an assessment that looks at both whether students can solve procedural problems, but also do they, how do they apply the conceptual understanding of mathematics? but also do they, how do they apply the conceptual understanding of mathematics in novel situations? And then how do they explain their reasoning? And that is the part that is extremely complicated to score. So math tests in their simplest form, you get a right or wrong answer and you can feed them through a machine that can score whether or not, you know, you answered with the correct number and the correct calculation. The part that's really complicated and the part that is in fact actually the most important aspect of these assessments is how students communicate their reasoning. And that's not something that is easy to score at all. We're looking at approximately 1,500 students that are responding to multiple items on this assessment. And the scoring takes place by using evaluation criteria that his, his organization has, as well as a rubric. They're looking at three aspects of the students' explanations, both, all three are the, how did the students model the mathematics? Meaning, did they use appropriate mathematics to the situation? Did they take the mathematics and the context and the connection to the actual situation and make that clear in their explanation? And then did they actually use logical completeness and were they accurate? Meaning, can they tell you and explain what it is they actually did mathematically? That's a very, those three things are very difficult to discern when reading student responses. As a teacher, we have a truly incredible group of teachers in our district and while, and our TOSSAs as well. While they could read these responses, to be accurate across 1,500 responses and to be objective is something that is really crucial to have the outside consulting support. And that's something that, to turn it around in a reasonable amount of time. If we were to have two elementary TOSSAs turn around 1,500 responses, one, they'd have to be available and willing to do that work over summer, but we'd have to pay them for it because the assessment is given in June. By the time we collected all the student responses and then scored, we'd be paying TOSSAs to be doing that work over summer. And again, there are a number of challenges with doing that work and scoring according to that rubric anyway. So that for those reasons, we believe this is an appropriate way to use a partner in this consulting firm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Ashley.
Yeah, that's why I asked. I think that, I mean, that was such a clear answer. Thank you.
Perfect. John, anything else?
No.
Thank you. Now, Russell.
Okay.
In your home.
I, I want to go back to a topic that Dr. Navarro spoke to earlier in the meeting and we got some public comments. And it's a very important topic because it is on everybody's mind. We're getting a lot of questions, various levels throughout our organization and in our community. And that is what's happening for the start of the new school year? So if I could provide a little more details regarding that. So first of all, a question is coming forth about when is the start of the school year? We previously announced that the start of our school year for students is August 24, August 24. So that date has not changed. It continues to be August 24 and we want to emphasize that. There was a lot of confusion after the governor had made some comments about starting school years earlier. It was a very blanket comment that he made. And we want to make sure that it's very clear that we're not starting school the new year in July. I want to ease everyone's concerns about that. It is the designated date that we've announced, August 24. The harder question though is what is it going to look like when we start school in the fall? That's the big question. And is it going to be in person where we're going to actually reopen our facilities for students to have instruction in their classrooms? We would love that. We would absolutely love that. I wish I could say that, that that's going to happen, but none of us know. Will it be more distance learning? Will it be a combination of the two? Will there be a phase in? There are so many questions around that, that we can't answer right now. And so what we are doing and what we're beginning to do, we will do more as we get closer to the end of the school year in the summer and obviously leading up to the beginning of the school year, is we're going to have to have several plans in place. And it might be starting with one plan, moving to another, back to another. So all districts are going to have to be prepared for that. Now, the good news is that there is guidance being created at all levels. Just recently, the CDC came out with specific guidelines for schools and when you reopen schools, wonder what criteria? And so that is very helpful. The state is coming up with guidance and our own Orange County, Dr. Navarro mentioned, is working on guidance for Orange County schools. That is, has not been done yet and it's in draft stages right now. In fact, Tim Holcomb, Shelley Humphries, our Transportation Director, Mary Graska, they're all serving on county committees right now, working on the guidance for Orange County schools. So I want to assure the board, I want to assure our parents and our staff that there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes to support Newport Mesa and other school districts to be prepared for the start of school. But when we're getting the questions of, well, what is it going to look like and what's it going to be? We're not there to announce it. And it's very important that we thoroughly gather input, have discussions. As Dr. Navarro has said, that NMFT has stepped forward, CSCE has stepped forward. Everybody needs to partner together to work on the best solution to open school because it is going to be challenging. And there's far too many questions right now to give a definitive plan. But I want to assure everybody that we are working on that and will have a plan and multiple levels of the plan and multiple types of the plan to be prepared for any contingency. But school will start on April 24. Learning will continue and, and we will be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. And don't forget our parents.
Absolutely.
And our PTAs because I think in PFOs, I think it's really important that they be part of the, part of the process.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering if we had just a date that we were thinking we might have one or two contingency plans, like July 15th or do we have a date that we can be telling parents? We're in progress and we're working towards this. We are remaining nimble, but you know, here are some of our plans.
You know, it's hard to give a date. I, I would love to have something very definitive before we leave for the summer. But like I said, it, it might be several different versions of the plan. And here's the other piece that I, I need to be very clear, that some of this might, we might have to have formal negotiations or bargaining with our, our units, depending on what it is these plans entail. So none of this is going to move real fast. None of this is going to be very definitive. But there's, there's quite a few steps that we're going to have to take before we get to a final plan.
So could I just add there, I totally am in the camp of we don't know, we can't know, right? The, the rules change every day and we, we don't know what the situation will be like with illness in the fall. There's a lot of things we don't, we know more, we know what we don't know more than what we do know. But it would be great if we could get some communication out and we're going to, you know, get people who come back and say, well, what is the plan? But the thing I've heard over and over is if you could just let us know that you're working on a plan on, you know, even if that's on repeat, that you guys have a plan, you have several plans, you're working on something, they would feel a lot better. A couple of different elementary foundation presidents approached me. They're very concerned because their, you know, families that are most involved, you know, without a plan are concerned and they're thinking of private school. And I don't know that they're truly committed to leaving our district, but they do want to know that we're thinking about it. So if we could communicate through maybe, thanks for taking time to participate in the thought exchange for distance learning that helps inform what we're doing in the fall. And we, you know, lots of outreach that says we, we know that this is coming. We're thinking about it. I think that's, that's the best we can do.
Great, thank you. And thank you all. I know that this is really prime time. So we're moving on to item 16, which is the consent calendar. Mrs. Black, would you like to read the consent calendar?
Okay. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services and superintendent. There will be no discussion on these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff or the public requested specific items to be discussed and or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
I have one hand, Mrs. Anderson.
That was from before. Sorry. I, I got all of my questions answered except one from the purchase report and I will email them that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted?
So moved.
Matoye.
Yep, Ms. Matoye moved.
Second Black.
Mrs. Black seconded. All in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry, roll call.
Flor.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Bartow.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 7-0. Resolution Consent Calendar. Ms. Black, would you read the resolution consent calendar?
As with the consent calendar, all items listed under Resolution Consent Calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion unless a board member requests that they be addressed separately.
Any questions or concern? Okay, may I have a motion please to adopt the consent calendar, I mean, resolution consent?
Motion to adopt.
Ms. Yelsey moved.
Second.
Ms. Matoye, second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Bartow.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Okay, there's been no further items. Moving on to board member reports. Any board member reports? Okay, Ms. Bartow.
Yes, I'm not sure if this is the right spot to do this, but we are collecting student board applications. And before everything with the delay, the initial date was April 26th. But things being what they are, I would, the applications didn't get to the majority of the students until April 26th. I would like to propose that the new date be May 26th for receipt of applications. And additionally, I've already received a couple, so that's encouraging.
Great. Is there any way that we can? Is there a provision within the, the process to invite members to apply? Like our current student board members who are, who are juniors right now?
So that's actually who I, we can reach out to them directly, but those are actually the ones who I've heard from.
Okay, all right. And also can we reach out and put out a call to the student advisory group? The members of the superintendent student advisory group?
I can draft an email with the updated application with the new date now that we agree on that.
And the principals have it, right? Do they have the application?
They do.
Okay, perfect, great. Okay, so let's go to, Ms. Yelsey, do you have any report? No, Ms. Snell?
Actually, I was going to bring that up too, the, the student board member issue. I cannot find it on the website and it can, do you know?
I think Sherry pulled it pending the new date from us, so I'll get the new copy to her tonight.
Okay, that would be great. And so I'm hoping that there is another push out communication with the application and everything because I've had a couple of parents inquire and I went on the website, couldn't find it. And I, so I would like, it would be great if something would go out to this, all the students and the parents that says, you know, student board member application, application deadline extended. And because I think we'd have more people apply. So thank you. That was my report.
Good, great. Ms. Matoye?
Unmute yourself.
Yes, I was trying. My fingers are tired right now. Colleagues, don't hate me. I have three things. One, Madeline's initial report, when it came in all garbled and weird and, and strange, it was brought to my attention by a, one of our teachers that she runs into that type of communication all the time. So I just want it brought to the attention of our IT people so that, she says it's, it's, many of her students have hotspots. So just in case it's not a good wifi connect, somebody needs to follow up, in my opinion. But it's just, it's now I've taken it off of that and put it in someone else's court, so that's one. Number two, Martha and I were able to attend virtually the California School Boards Association Spring Delegate Meeting and it was fascinating and interesting. And the topic, the main topic of the day was the School and Community Funding Act, which will be on the, more than likely on the ballot in November. They're finalizing the counts. This was not generated by CSBA, but many fellow educational groups had, had interest in it and it was a very, very lively discussion. This in a nutshell is the reorganization of property tax assessment for businesses. There's a bunch of exclusions that you don't have to worry about. But CSBA's final vote was to take no position on it. Because at this time, our climate is just, it's a, it's a bad financial time for us to be taxing somebody even more. So that was the nutshell and so CSCE took no position. So when you hear it, you have a personal opinion, do whatever you like. But as a board, that's what California School Boards Association did. We also talked about reopening and it was pretty much echoed with Russell's commentary of, we have no clue and they keep changing the rules. So my last comment is that I see how much we are doing and I was looking at our board meeting schedule and I realized that there are five weeks between our July meeting and our August meeting. And I would like if the powers that be would just look at it because if we think we're going to need more meetings, which I seem to think that we've got an awful lot of decisions coming up between now and then, that this may be the summer that the board doesn't quote, get some time off in between meetings. So.
That's because we've had so much time off now.
Hello. Sorry. And because we're going to fly everywhere in airplanes and to closed places. So we have no idea what's open and closed. So, but bottom line is it would be, move us to schedule something earlier rather than later. So if you do get to take a weekend to visit a relative that you know has been equally confined, you have time to do it. So just put that on the back burner and keep it in your minds. With that, I spoke fast and got my thoughts out. Thank you. I'm done.
And Ms. Black?
Yeah, Dr. Navarro, I have a question regarding the, you know, the superintendent student advisory. Do we know if we're going to meet? I have heard from quite a few of the students and they're, you know, they're sad, but, but they understand what's going on. Do we, I know we were trying to and I know everybody's drinking from a fire hose, so. But it would be nice to have at least one meeting. It would be nice, you know, before we end congratulate our seniors and celebrate their service. It would be nice.
I agree. I, I miss those kids.
I know, me too.
You know what? I promise that Phil and I will talk tomorrow and we'll, we'll put our heads together and see what we can do with the activities directors.
Okay.
Okay?
That would be great. At least let me know one way or the other. You know, I would just like to be in the loop so that when I, when I am approached or I see them, be assumed that, you know.
Via Zoom that, you know, I kind of know what's going on.
It is a highlight for all three of us when we get to be with those. And we miss it greatly. So yeah, Phil and I, he's nodding. We'll get to, we'll, we'll get, we'll get together tomorrow and talk about it.
Okay, thanks, you guys.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank the BAPA folks. Because there are several who are partnering with the Orange County Department of Ed. For students to participate in a census art contest. So that will help raise awareness for students and also their families as they're putting together their projects. So I'm thankful that we were able to jump on that. It's like a two week window. That Orange County Department of Ed put it out, they're due June third. So I just wanted to update on that. And then I wanted to ask. I know that fall is a long way out, but what about summer school? Where are we on summer school? We haven't talked about summer school at all tonight. Where are we on planning for that and what? What are we going to do to target any learning loss and care for students? So any updates on summer school would be great. Thank you.
Russell, do you have any updates or Kurt?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to finalize all of that. We'll have some definitive information for the board. At the end of this week on all of our, all of our summer programs and what we have been focusing on.
Okay, so we'll find out on Friday and then when will the public find out? When will the parents know? And when will the teachers know?
Hopefully shortly after that. We always like to let the board know first.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to give you a brief crop update. We had our, our meeting Zoom. Just so that things have not stopped working in ROP. Four classes were just approved for A through G again. So we have four more, so it keeps rising the level. Administration of Justice, Crime Scene Investigator, Investigator. Culinary Arts and Sports Medicine Internship are the four new ones that are A through G. We're still looking at the funding. It should, it should stay, but we, we're, we're going to be in deficit again. It's because we had a number of. Two of our districts that are part of the JUA did elected not to have a career specialists. So Huntington Beach and Saddleback, both districts are having significant declines. So they're not having career specialists, so we had to lay off some, lay off some individuals to meet budget. We're still working. That's it on that. Michelle, do you have an update on legislation?
I have one tiny one. There's a bill to watch AB two twenty eight eighty seven. It's in the assembly right now, so it's still pretty early, but it's related to mitigating emergencies, including epidemics and things like that. It would have to do with average daily attendance and basically codifying the fact that if. There is an emergency, how attendance would be calculated going forward as to not impact funding. But it's still pretty, pretty early on in that one.
Yeah, that's been a big discussion all across the districts that we've been in contact with, Ashar and I. Of the fact that. Because I mean, even in our district, we have kids that are moving in with families. They're still enrolled, but they may not. Be average daily attendance because they're just not having to cope with things. And so there's a big push. I know Tustin is really pushing for enrollment versus ADA. So it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting option. Any other further?
Can I ask a question about that? At our next meeting, can we possibly discuss attendance and our, our current board policy? Because I know, I mean, going into next year. Um, one of the concerns I've heard from some teachers and parents is. You know, before we would try and have kids come to school as long as they don't have a fever. But I think, you know, for next year to have it. Have attendance and perfect attendance not be such a factor could be healthy. So I didn't know if we had addressed that, our current board policy in a while. Would that, could that be something we discuss next time we convene, please?
Yeah, I, I agree, Ashley, and I think that probably that's something that even the reopening group are considering. Because you can be asymptomatic and not have a fever and still have some. Could be still a carrier. So I think all of those items are all. All up for consideration. Our next scheduled meeting will, yes, Ms. Anderson.
I wanted to address the fact that CSBA did mention in delegate assembly. That they are coming out with a packet of revised policies that address what's been going on with COVID. So we typically use those as a template, so that will make our job much easier. However, the edit committees may get extra busy over the summer. Yay. So that's it. Thank you.
And then we have Jeff here, is Jeff still on? We have the budget. Another budget meeting on the twenty ninth, I believe. Is there any homework or anything that you would like to ask of the board prior to that meeting to help you in preparation for that? This is your opportunity to tell us what to do.
Well, you know, just remembering to back to the Great Recession, the touchstones that you guys had given us. And that's kind of what's guiding us currently. And so we expect that we're going to be. Have some recommendations that will be well thought out and we will be ready.
Okay.
Arthur, would it help to have Jeff or I send you those touchstones now so you can look at them again?
That would be great. I think it'd be great because if I, if, if they're from the Great Recession of two thousand eight. I'm trying to think of how many, there's probably only two of us on the board, maybe three. Karen was on the board, Karen. Two thousand eight, Dana and myself. I don't think there was anybody else on the board.
I was working. Does that count?
Does that count?
I had to.
Yeah, I think that, I think those types of conversations about, I thought those touchstones would be really helpful. Yes.
I would love to, we can hear on there for some of our categorical, like early childhood, I'm really concerned about after school programs. Any kind of childcare that we currently, that seems like that's one of the ones that I've been hearing. So I would love to hear for any categoricals, what we possibly could do to mitigate. Any money lost to those.
Great.
We'll be ready for that.
And then Russell, I know that we, yesterday was the first day when we offered the ability of teachers to go back into their classrooms. Do we have any reports on whether was, there was a, a large response, a small response, no response? Do we, do we have any, do we have any? I mean, it's only been one day.
Yeah, it's only, it's only been one day. We have not gathered that data, but we, we gather that and share that with the board. Okay, but I have not heard any numbers yet and I haven't heard any problems either, so.
Well, that's good. Okay. Well, I think it's really important, I, I think one of the questions that I would hope that the committee is also looking at. Is how do we support our teachers in the future? Because as the student said, we really appreciate some of the, how they've done, you know, reaching out and how they've been creative about their classrooms. And how do we, how do we extend that into and how do we support teachers who are, who are thinking outside the box? And are delivering lessons completely different, like the, the teacher, you know, Linforce. At, at Costa Mesa High School in terms of next year. And how do we, how do we support those types of innovations that have freed teachers up from, you know, a nine to five? Or a ninety minute lesson in a classroom. So. All right, so may I have a motion? There's no other reports, no other comments. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Ms. Matoye moved. Your second.
Raise our hand.
Second.
Oh, yes. Ms. Snell. Yes.
Raise our hand to vote. We have to have a roll call. Never mind. Do it.
Oh. I'm going, I'm going with, it's a unanimous.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think everybody's been cooped up too long.
Here's, here's it. Drive carefully.